Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson, City Manager Isaiah Hughley, Pops Barnes District 1, Glenn Davis District 2, Bruce Huff District 3, Toya Tucker District 4, Charmaine Crab District 5, Gary Allen Mayor Pro Tim and District 6, Mimi Woodson District 7, Walker Garrett District 8, Judy Thomas Post 9 at Large Counselor, John House Post 10 at Large Counselor, Sandra Davis Clerk of Counsel, and City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Welcome. Thanks for joining us for the March 22nd City Council Meeting. There's a lot of green in here. And they seem to be in a pretty good mood. We'll get to y'all in a little bit. We're going to begin our meeting as we begin all of our meetings, and that is by invoking God's presence on our proceedings. And David Stallion, Reverend Stallion, is on our agenda, and he is on his way to the podium. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you Mayor.
Yes sir.
Let us pray. Father of heaven, we are grateful for arriving to this point of the day. We're asking your blessing for the remainder of the day. We thank you for this council and its leadership. We're asking your guidance upon them. And we thank you for the citizens that are here and those that may be viewing. We pray that all that will be discussed and decided today will be for the betterment of this city. A special prayer for our national leaders as well as those in Ukraine. We ask now that you will be in the midst of what's going to take place and that all will be in accordance to your will. We ask it all now. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pastor, thank you so much. Please thank you Church for sharing you with us this evening. All right, if you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counsel, you have the minutes from the March 8th meeting. Motion approved from Counselor Tucker and a second from, who made that say? Counselor Huff. Are there any edits or any changes anybody'd like to make? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. All right, we finally have an update on COVID that is act- Oh, I'm sorry. Hang on, I don't have my- Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I really wanted to just take the moment to thank Reverend Stallion and the Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church. We're all excited about the interchange that's going to go in at I-185 and Old Casita Road. And took a lot of work and many, many years with a lot of people around this table working to make that happen. And, you know, it is going to open up that area. We've got the Spencer Greenways here tonight, and it will open up access not only to the new Spencer High School, but there's a little football stadium that's being built out there. And it is going to open up access to that football stadium. And, but for Mount Pilgrim working with us and seeing the vision and wanting to do what's for the greater good, the better good of the community, we would not have that opportunity to open up that area, not only for the new Spencer football stadium, but to the access to the new Spencer school, but to economic development. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that Reverend Stallion and the Mount Pilgrim congregation made that possible, and they are constructing their new church facility. And I believe it's coming along really well. But I just, I thought it'd be good to just acknowledge that. But for them, we would not be having that interchange and opening up that area for all of the possibilities that will come in the future as a result of that.
No, that was more than appropriate. Thank you for doing so. We appreciate Mount Pilgrim's willingness to work with us. Counselor Huff?
Want to piggyback with the city manager. He's being very modest and he's thanking everyone. I'd like to thank the voters for voting for the TSPLOST to give us the opportunity to work with Mount Pilgrim to negotiate the deal. But I also like to give a public thank you to the city manager for working really with us over the past five or six years to try to make a lot of things come together. So I want you all to know he's been involved with us from the beginning, the mayor, everybody here. And we look forward to everything going. And Pastor Stallion and the members of Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church, I was down there like a kid on Sunday, so I took pictures Sunday of the progress. So it's looking real good. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Very, very well said. All right, we, COVID outlook is much better than it was last several months. We've got a hospitalization rate right now of about 32 that have been admitted to one of our area hospitals and diagnosed with COVID. But we've, we're down to three new cases. So things are looking better. We have opened up, made masks voluntary in government buildings. We will continue to monitor the hospitalization rate. That's the key figure that we keep an eye on. But again, every time we give an update, we end by thanking the people of this community that have worked so hard to kind of not only protect themselves, but to protect their neighbors as well. So thank you for your participation in trying to keep Columbus moving forward both economically and from a medical perspective. All right, we've got a number of proclamations this evening. One of the first ones we're going to do, we're going to invite our friends from the Exchange Club of Columbus to the podium. And I'm going to ask Counselor Charmaine Crab to recognize Child Abuse Prevention Month. We have to thank the Exchange Club for all that they do. They also make great pancakes. They were very good.
It's my pleasure to be able to read this into the records. Whereas child abuse is an ever-growing tragedy across America that affects the lives of every one of us. And every year, more than 4 million referrals are made to child protection agencies involving more than 4.3 million children. And this blight on our society that affects our children who are abused, neglected, or traumatized must be alleviated. And the societal malignancy called child abuse respects no racial, religious, class, or geographic boundaries, and in fact, has been declared a national emergency. And the National Exchange Club officially adopted the prevention of child abuse as its national project in 1979 as the 61st National Convention. And Child Abuse Prevention Month recognizes the importance of families and communities working together to strengthen families to prevent child abuse and neglect. And the Exchange Club of Columbus creates public awareness of the problem of child abuse by educating the public on the seriousness of this social malignancy. And the Exchange Club of Columbus provides a variety of public awareness materials designed to help inform and increase awareness of child abuse and how it can be prevented. And the Exchange Club of Columbus seeks to help families and those who support and encourage families as they seek to understand and problem solve the various challenges that come with raising children. And the Exchange Club of Columbus Timeout Teddy mascot will tell you to take time out to know your child, take time out to learn about discipline, take time out to help when you see the warning signs, and take time out to prevent child abuse. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
We want to say, first of all, thank you to Mayor Skip Henderson and the council for giving us this proclamation. Child abuse prevention is very, very important to the Exchange Club. And our big timeout teddy, couldn't be here tonight. So he sent his little buddy to let y'all know that he is very much ready to do the role for child abuse prevention. And these little bears, we give them in bulk to the police department, to the sheriff's department, and to the treehouse. When they encounter a child that has been traumatized in some form, they give them a little timeout teddy bear to kind of, you know, make them feel a little bit better. So we love timeout teddy. And just want to say thank you to the council, the mayor, and everyone involved in this, and we certainly appreciate the recognition.
Introduce yourselves if you don't mind, so we can get your names.
I'm Betty Lindsey. I'm president of the Exchange Club. I'm sorry.
I'm Marguerite Kepfer, and I'm over Child Abuse Prevention Committee.
I'm Karen Boach, and I'm Director of Fundraising.
Dawn Kepfer.
But we just wanted folks to know your names, because you guys do such a great, great job, great works with the Exchange Club, and the efforts that you put towards stopping child abuse is just, it's very much appreciated. We still have to be careful with handshakes, but if you would walk up here and I'll give you your proclamation, and we can tell you thank you as you come by.
Thank you.
Dawn, thank you Betty. Good seeing you. I did. All right. I don't know if y'all noticed, but we had a local team that did fairly well in their state tournament. And we want to congratulate the Spencer Greenway for bringing home the state title. We're going to ask the young men and their coach to come on up. And guys, if you would, line up, line up on this side. We've actually got two separate proclamations. That's how good this team was. So we're going to, we're going to read both of them. And I guess Counselor Huff, you going to go first? All right, if you'd hit your light and we'll get your microphone turned on. Here we go.
To the mighty, mighty Greenway, Spencer High School, congratulations. As we go through this, I'll get to some of the names, and I'm going to ask for your help with some of the names to make sure we get them correctly stated. But I want to say ahead of time that we are so proud of you and for your excellence on the basketball court. But as was stated, as was stated last night at the school district meeting, school board meeting, that you all have exemplified all of the good things that anyone could ask of any young men. Everywhere you go, you've gotten compliments on how well your manners were, how well you acted, and you represented Spencer High School in Columbus, Georgia everywhere that you travel. So we wanted everybody to know that. And as we go through this, we also have athletic scholars involved in what's going on. And they've done well on the basketball court, but they have also done very well in the classroom. So I'll start, and then we'll have a second reading by Counselor Thomas. Whereas the William Henry Spencer High School Varsity Boys Basketball Team earned its third straight regional championship by a score of 73 to 45 versus La Grange on February 19, 2022. And whereas the 2021-2022 Varsity Boys Basketball Team earned a 30 and 2 overall record and a 16 and 0 regional record. Whereas not only are the scholars focused on basketball, on the basketball court, but they excelled in the classroom. Seven players have earned grade point averages higher than 3.2. Eight players are excelling in rigorous advanced placement and honor scores. Whereas the members of the team leading the way include Tyson McDaniels, Tony Montgomery, and Randall Dixon. Tyson McDaniels scored 16 points, eight rebounds, and four blocks. Tony Montgomery scored 14 points and three assists. And Randall Dixon scored 12 points and four steals. Whereas Assistant Coach Eric Pembroke Allen awarded a team ball for his 100th game win. And whereas the team statistical averages include, is it Kyrie Diaz? Is that right? Dees? Kyrie Dees, team captain, 12th grade, averages 2.3, 2.3 points a game, 2.1 steals per game. Tyson McDaniels, 11th grade, averages 11.7 points a game, 7.3 rebounds, 2.3 blocks. Tony Montgomery, 9th grade, averaged 10.3 points a game. Wadarius, is that correct? Okay. Wadarius Scott, 11th grade, averages 9.6 points, 4.3 rebounds, six assists. Antonio TJ Cochrane, 11th grade, averages 6.5 points, 8.6 rebounds. Randall Dixon, 12th grade, averages 7.8 points, 2.4 steals. Ryan Mobley Jr., 11th grade, averages 7.5 points, 4.5 assists. Is it Vashon? Vashon. Vashon Moody, 11th grade, averaged 7.3 points. Mor, is it Morley? Help me with that one. Morley? Morley, Dreon, Dre Duncan? Dre Duncan, okay. Dre Duncan. 10th grade, averages 5.6 points, three steals. Gary Gaethers, 10th grade, averages 4.8 points. Jalen Drake, 11th grade, averages 3.2 points, 3.6 blocks. Jamie Jackson, 12th grade, team manager. Jonathan Holmes, 11th grade, rising star, significant contributor. Keishon Sampton, 10th grade, rising star, significant contributor. And whereas the team is led by Co-Athletic Director and Head Varsity Coach Quintavious Allen, Co-Athletic Director Joseph Kegler, Assistant Coach Eric Pembroke Allen, Assistant Coach and JV Head Coach Anthony Saints, Assistant Coach and Head Freshman Coach Douglas Cromarty, and Assistant Coach Corey Dees. And whereas the mayor and city council of Columbus, Georgia, recognize the accomplishments and extend deepest congratulations to the William Henry Spencer High School Varsity Boys Basketball Team. Now therefore, Mayor Skip Henderson, BH Skip Henderson, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022, as Ride the Wave Championship Day.
All right, and Counselor Thomas?
It's always a delight to be able to recognize students in our schools in Muskogee County, and especially students who excel not only in the classroom, but on the courts. And guys, we are so proud of you. I hope you can feel all of that pride that we have for you tonight. I'm delighted to be able to read this proclamation into the record. Through hard work, dedication, and sportsmanship, the 2021-22 William Henry Spencer High School Varsity Boys Basketball Team earned the school's first-ever state title with a victorious score of 62 to 42 against the Westover Patriots in the Georgia High School Association Class 4A State Title Game on Wednesday, March 9, 2022, at the Macon Coliseum. And whereas Randall Dixon, where's Randall? Raise your hand up high, Randall, so they can see you. Randall Dixon, Spencer guard, led the team in scoring 12 points. And Tyreen McDaniel, Spencer forward, finished with 11. Where's Ty- Okay, there you go. Wait. 11 points, nine rebounds, and five blocks, including a pair of key dunks from the turnover. Whereas Tony Montgomery, only, he's the only varsity freshman. Tony, wait. And Spencer's shooting guard scored 11 points and five assists. And whereas GHSA conference games included Spencer versus Spalding, 81 to 42. Spencer versus North O'Conne, 62 to 35. Spencer versus Dartie, 56 to 34. Spencer versus Marius, 44-36, Fort Valley State University. State championship Spencer versus Westover, 62-42, at the Macon Coliseum. You guys are good. Do you know that? The team is led by Co-Athletic Director and Head Varsity Coach Quintavious Allen. Where's Coach Allen? Not here tonight. Okay. Where am I? Joseph Kegler, Assistant Coach. Eric Pembroke Allen, Assistant Coach. And JV Head Coach Anthony Saints, Assistant Coach and Head Freshman Coach Douglas Kumari, and Assistant Coach Corey Dees. Just give the coaches a next. And listen to this, folks. The win is William Henry Spencer High School's 28th in a row in the team's 30 to 22 record. And the mayor, whereas the mayor and the city council of Columbus, Georgia, recognize the accomplishments and extend the deepest congratulations to the William Henry Spencer High School Varsity Basketball Team. And now Mayor Skip Henderson does proclaim today, Ride the Wave Championship Day. Congratulations.
It would appear the toughest, the toughest thing for y'all to do during these games was just making sure you got to the court on time, because I didn't hear anybody got within 20 of y'all. Listen, I know we want to hear from your coach, but we've got a pretty proud Spencer graduate up here who's, who's about to bust a button. So we're going, we're going to let our city manager have a few moments.
Well, Mayor, I'm glad you did that, because this is my high school. My high school. Yes. And I just want to take this opportunity to congratulate this team. And I made a note. It says, "This team is the truth." This team is the real deal. They're smart. You heard Counselor Huff reading. They're talented, and they got skills. They're the truth. All of the above, yes. And so I just simply wanted to say how, to you, how proud I am. Principal Freeman, Assistant Principal Patterson, to this team, all the coaches. I am so proud of my school, of each of you, and I'm glad you're here tonight. And, you know, there will be four signs that will go up that will recognize you as a 4A state champ. And, you know, there will be a sign at the roundabout just close to the school, another one on Fort Benin Road, and there will be two on Victor Drive. And so, but, but I want to be clear that, you know, we're going to establish a policy, and we're going to make sure that we do the same exact thing for every state championship team that comes about in this community. And so it's not, it's not going to be just Spencer High School, but we're going to have other state champs, and we're going to do the same for them. Well, come on back. But Mayor, I just simply wanted to say congratulations to them. I am so proud this night, this day. This is a Spencer High School day in Columbus, Georgia.
Thank you sir. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Ms. Rosa Patterson, who's the Assistant Principal at Spencer High School and accompanying this team tonight.
Yes ma'am.
And one last comment to the principal. You've been in our prayers for a good while now, and we're so happy they brought you some good news. And we're happy that you've gotten through things well. If you need anything from any of us, I all don't know your story, but you have been able to function unbelievably well under these conditions. And they brought you a championship home, which I'm sure helps a lot. So to you and your staff, everybody, Ms. Patterson keeps me informed with everything that goes on, and I appreciate you. Thank you so much.
And gentlemen, finally, let me just point out that one of the great pleasures of being mayor is I have the opportunity to represent and speak for the entire city of Columbus. So please understand the words I say, they come from me, but they represent the feelings of this community. We are proud of you. We are proud of you for your athletic success, but we are really proud of the young men that you are and the way you represented your city. So thank you. Coach, anybody want to say a few words? Come on.
First of all, I want to say thanks to everyone for recognizing our kids. They've worked so hard, the coaches, the parents, everybody. Can we recognize the parents that are in here, by the way? It has been an interesting year, but these kids, they, they called me in before I- Which game was that? Y'all sent me the video. They called me in, and, Mayor, before the Mayor's game, and they said, "Our motto is going to be 'Do It For Doc.'" And that just really uplifted me, and it made me feel so much better. And I want to thank you guys. I love you all. And, and we appreciate the city and Isaiah and everything that y'all have done. Thank you so much. Thanks, thank you.
If you want to come up here and somebody wants to receive these, then we can pass them out. Guys, we appreciate you. Now that's a good way to start a meeting. Now, that's a good way to start a meeting. Thank you. All right, we have a, finally, we've got a resolution for Frank Marass, honoring Frank Marass, the former president of the Hospital Authority of Columbus, Georgia, for his service to the city. I don't know if Mr. Marass is here, but if there's any family member. All right, I don't, I don't see anyone here to receive it. Oh, okay. Oh, yes, come on up to the podium if you don't mind, I'm sorry. It's right up here, you're fine.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. It's my privilege to publish this, this resolution for not only my friend, but a friend to Columbus, Georgia. And it reads as follows. Whereas Frank Marass III, recently retired after over 36 years from service to Columbus Consolidated Government and the citizens of Columbus, Georgia. Whereas Frank was a lifelong resident of Columbus, having been born on August 29, 1960, to Frank Marass Jr. and Kathleen Morris. Early on Frank, early on Frank was called brother, and many of his old friends still call him brother. Frank grew up at 1422 Elmwood Drive in Overlook, attended Wynton and Brookstone, and graduated from Columbus High School in 78. Frank attended both Columbus State University and Georgia Southwestern University, and received a degree from Georgia Southwestern University, 1985. Whereas shortly after graduation, Frank began his career with the Columbus Consolidated Government in the Revenue Department on February 24, 1986. Whereas early in Frank's career, Frank Lambert recognized his skills managing people and finance. And just so everybody knows, Frank Lambert was the first city manager of Columbus Consolidated Government. Frank Lambert recognized his skills managing people and finance. With his encouragement, Frank began working with the Hospital Authority of Columbus, Georgia, and the Muskogee Manor Nursing Home on July 17, 1995. Whereas Frank saw a need to be a certified nursing home administrator, and he successfully received his licensing nursing home administrator certificate on August 9, 19, April 9, 1998, becoming the first CEO to have a nursing home license. Later Frank was certified to be an instructor. Whereas Frank had the longest tenure as CEO, having been CEO for over 26 years. When Frank started, the Hospital Authority of Columbus, Georgia had 242 beds at Muskogee Manor. Whereas Frank, Frank successfully acquired Azalea Trace Nursing Center in, in February 2012, and successfully acquired Hamilton House Nursing Center in June 2013. Whereas Frank recognized the need for new and better care for the elderly and disabled in our community, and led the Hospital Authority of Columbus, Georgia in the construction and opening of Orchard View Rehabilitation and Skilled Nursing Center with 200 beds, which was completed on February 28, 2015, and the construction and opening of Ridge Grass Rehabilitation and Skilled Nursing Center with 84 beds, which completed, which was completed on February 8, 2021. Whereas during Frank's illustrious career as CEO of the Hospital Authority of Columbus, it has grown to become the largest caregiver of elderly in Muskogee County and one of the most profitable, best-run nursing homes in the entire state. Currently, the Hospital Authority of Columbus, Georgia is certified to have 480 beds. Whereas Frank was sometime called Leonardo da Vinci of fishing and hunting because of his skills, and as an avid fisherman-hunter, later became a master chef, learning how to cook everything he caught and killed. Whereas Frank followed in his father's and grandfather's footsteps and became a local Indian archaeologist and artifact collector his entire life. Whereas Frank Marass was, has devoted almost his entire career to taking care of the elderly and disabled citizens of Columbus, Georgia, and his efforts are worthy of special recognition by the council of this incredible service to our community. Now therefore, the Columbus, Council of Columbus, Georgia, is hereby resolved, we hereby express our deep appreciation to Frank Marass, former president of the Hospital Authority of Columbus, Georgia, for his service and dedication to the elderly, disabled citizens of Columbus, Georgia, and his contributions to the Columbus community will long be remembered. I move adoption.
Motion second to adopt. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? It's approved.
Thank you. I'll just say, he wished he could have been here and could have made it tonight. But I really do appreciate the recognition for his service and for the authority, so thank you very much.
You want to come receive the resolution? Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to take a minute of personal privilege. I, I know that some of us around this table are aware that May the 24th, which is a Tuesday, is Election Day, and we have council scheduled for that evening at 5:30. And I would like for us to have perhaps at this time a short discussion about moving that date, that meeting. Either to, we could do it a number of ways. We can move it to the, the third Tuesday, we can move it to the morning of the fourth Tuesday. We do have a fifth Tuesday meeting in May that we could, we could do it, but I feel like that the polls will still be open for another hour and a half after our meeting starts, and I just would like for us to consider, and perhaps some of the rest of you have some thoughts about when we ought to, if, if we ought to move that meeting, and if so, when. And I personally am not, you know, real, real hung up on any one of those dates, but it seems to me that the, the logical choices would either be move it to the third Tuesday, move it to the morning of the fourth Tuesday, or make the fifth Tuesday work session a regular business meeting. And I'd like to hear from some of the other councils, if any of them have any thoughts about what we ought to do, and then ask the clerk to bring us a resolution, perhaps at our next meeting, to solidify that date.
Okay, Counselor.
Since my light's still on.
Go ahead.
I agree with Counselor Thomas. I think we ought to consider that. I would, it seemed like I would prefer to go to the fifth Tuesday at 9 o'clock, but it's, you know, whatever council's wishes are.
Counselor Garrett?
I've got a trial the third week, so I mean, the work session would definitely be better for me as well.
Any other thoughts on, Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say, if you consider the fifth Tuesday, it works for us because Tia Shun Johnson told me last week, we don't have any items listed for the work session on the fifth Tuesday. So if you'd like to convert it to a business meeting, that, that works for us, but we can do whatever you decide.
All right, we can do it with an oral resolution, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, I would request that the clerk bring us at our next meeting a resolution moving the 24th meeting to the 31st.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Counselor Thomas. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I did just want to state that Counselor Woodson has now joined the meeting.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so Counselor Woodson has joined us remotely. All right, we'll move on to the city attorney's agenda. Mr. Fag?
All right, thank you, Mayor. First item up on our business list is vote at 2947 Mimosa Street. This zoning item is going to single-family three, ready for action.
Motion approved from Counselor Huff, second from the Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify, I would say an aye. Anyone opposed? Counselor Woodson's votes in favor.
Cue it up.
Oh, they're on, I'm sorry. Going too quick. All right, it's approved.
All right, that passes. The next item is the second reading of the swimming pool enforcement for...
Motion approved from Counselor Barnes, second from the Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cue it and register your votes. Okay?
All right, passed. Next item is a zoning hearing. Mayor, we've got several parties to hear from. This is going to request a change in zoning from residential estate one to single-family residential four. It's a Banana Bay petition. This is at Zero Old Guard Road, just to the west, I believe, of Veterans Parkway. And we've got Planning Department recommending denial, Planning Advisory Commission recommended approval, subject to a school and traffic study. And I think Mr. Austin Gibson, attorney, is here with the applicants. They want to come on up first, we'll hear from them, then we'll hear from Mr. Jones, and then anybody else that wants to be heard. Mr. Gibson, give them your name and address and introduce who's with you, please, sir.
Yes, sir. My name's Austin Gibson. I'm an attorney at Page-Schranhams here in Columbus. My address is 1111 Bay Avenue, third floor. I am here today on behalf of Banana Bay LLC, and I have with me today one of the principals of Banana Bay, Dr. Matthew Thomas, and then one of Banana Bay's agents, excuse me, Kel Bowers behind me, and Mr. Bowers will, if you'll indulge, like to speak after me for just a moment. So we are here before you today to rezone approximately 49.27 acres on Old Guard Road. And I do have a power point, yes. And so this, these maps here should orient you as to where we are. You know, I guess they're not quite zoomed out enough, but Veterans Parkway is running below this photo, and Old Guard Road shoots up, and you've got the elementary school, and then the, the school in picture is, I believe, Veterans Middle School there. And so that's our property across the street from the middle school. It's currently zoned RE1, which allows for the development of single-family properties on one acre or more land. And we are asking that the property be rezoned to SFR4, so that we can build on smaller lots. And I will tell you, I'll tell you why as we move forward. The, the purpose of this development is going to be 115 single-family residential units on quarter-acre to half-acre lots. So, and the idea behind it is, it's going to be targeted towards the 55 and over demographic. So if you're familiar with the villages in, in Florida and some of those other developments in the Florida area, they're targeted towards, you know, the 55 and over demographic, what you've got is you're going to have a strict HOA that's, you know, going to prohibit a lot of activity that you'd find in a normal neighborhood, and then will also handle all yard maintenance. So the residents won't have any yard maintenance, the HOA will mow the grass, put out pine straw, all those types of things. And you're also going to have, you know, certain amenities that would, that would appeal to the 55 and over demographics, such as, you know, a lot of green space, there's going to be a clubhouse, and, you know, a sort of a walk-in pool type thing and all that stuff. So those type of things should appeal to that older demographic. And Mr. Bowers is going to go into a little more detail about the specifics of the development, but, but generally, the, the homes in the development are going to be two or three-bedroom homes. You're looking at 1,200 to 1,800 square feet for each of those homes, and like I said, they are going to be on this quarter acre to, you know, in some cases, just based on the topography, half-acre lots. And so as you, well, it's, it's very difficult to see, but you'll see a little black arrow pointing to that bluish area, and so for the future land use of this development, it is going to be in that mixed-use category. So in theory, at least, this SFR4 would fit into that mix, that mixed-use that, that is projected. And so here you still see our site plan, and you'll see the roughly 15, or 115, excuse me, units. And you'll also notice that there, the development is, it's all situated in one area, and that's for two reasons. One, one, there's difficult topography out in that area. It's very, it's very hilly, there's, there's a lot of rock in that area that, you know, really impedes construction. So you're really only looking, based on this site plan that we've got right now, on approximately 30 of the 50 acres, 50 acres being used for the development, and the remainder will either be green space, or it'll be, it'll remain as it currently is, just at raw land. So of course, with, with only 50 acre, with 50 acres and only 30 acres being used, your, your buffers are going to meet or exceed the UDO requirements, so there's no, there's no real buffering issues. We should be compliant in all respects with that. And so additionally, this, this development would have a positive economic impact on the city, of course, as there will be numerous construction jobs in the build-out of these 115 units, and then additionally, there will be, there will be jobs for maintaining the, maintaining the association property, as well as, you know, rental offices, or, or leasing offices, or, you know, selling offices, and then as well as, you know, manning the pools and manning the, you know, all the other amenities that the association will have to offer. We anticipate that this, that this property would increase the tax base by approximately $410,000 annually. And so now, I'll go into a couple factors or issues that, that have arisen relating to this, and our response to those issues. Primarily the, well, let me address one briefly. At our PAC hearing, we, we heard from the school district that they had a couple of concerns regarding the development, one being school impact, and the second being traffic. And so just to address the first very, very briefly, with a 55 and over community, you're, you're not going to have the number of students in the schools that you would expect in a normal residential subdivision. That being the case, because they are, they are 55 and over, and then additionally, that the, that they are two- and three-bedroom properties, so there's not going to be a lot of extra room for, you know, nieces and nephews, grandchildren, those types of things to come in and live with them. And, you know, based on, based on US Census data, which is the most accurate data, you know, we can find, and it is nationwide data, not specifically to Columbus, we'd anticipate that there, based on this development, there'd be, you know, at the most, 10 students that would come into the schools in that, just based on the statistical data. And so then that brings me to traffic, which is the big-ticket item. If, if you've been out on Old Guard Road, you're aware that, you know, there are three schools within that quarter-mile area, and it's, it's an area of big development right now. It seems like all of Columbus is kind of moving towards that north, north end of town. So you do have a fair amount of traffic out there at this time, and that was one of the school district's concerns, and I believe they're here tonight, so you'll, you'll hear those concerns firsthand. And so at, at the PAC hearing, we were asked to perform a traffic study on Old Guard Road to determine the impact of traffic based on our development. We, we met with a traffic engineer and got that priced out, and, you know, to be frank with you, it was going to cost between $20,000 and $25,000 to do that traffic study. And from speaking with the traffic engineer, the school district, the planning department, I think, I won't speak for anyone, but I think the general consensus is we know what the traffic study would say. The traffic study would say that, that traffic is, you know, very bad on Old Guard Road during school pickup and school drop-off. And I think that's for a variety of reasons, but I mean, I think the main reason would be that the, the parents coming in and out of the schools, there's not, there's not enough queuing on the school property itself to accommodate all the, you know, all the vehicles that are in there, so the school, excuse me, the school traffic does get backed up in that left-hand turn lane, and I guess in some cases, it'd also be backed up on veterans trying to turn on, into that left-hand turn lane on Old Guard. So in meetings with the school district, we, you know, we tried to, you know, work towards a solution, and unfortunately, we, we weren't able to get there. We couldn't, we couldn't really do anything that would address their concerns, and mainly that's because, so this is more of a zoomed-out picture there, and it's, it's, you see how far I had to zoom out, but our property is generally where that red star is, and you'll see that it's, other than Old Guard Road, it's completely landlocked. It's surrounded by the Vulcan Quarry, some property owned by Georgia Crown, and then the Woodruff property, of course, is to the Old Town, and those, that development's over to the, to the left-hand side of this photograph. So in discussions with the school district, they, they asked that, in order for them to, to not oppose our rezoning, they requested that we provide additional access off Old Guard Road. So in other words, that would be extending Old Guard, and I'll go back to the prior slide so we can see. You'll see Old Guard makes that left-hand turn there towards, you know, in front of the middle school, and then towards that construction area, which is the new Graystone Development out there. And, and, you know, we couldn't find any solution that would work, because, like I said, this property is landlocked, it's surrounded by private property, there's, there's no There's, there's no, there's not gonna be any easy way to get an additional access point for Old Guard Road, to, in other words, connect to either Fortson Road or Woodruff Road. It's just, you know, you're half a mile to a mile away. And that's through private property, a railroad, and as, as well as quarry. So, you know, it, to do something like that, it would require, it would require the city government to condemn some land, and then it would also require, you know, millions of dollars in investment to pave a road, such as that. So while, while I understand that, you know, the safety concerns and the traffic concerns that the school district has, you know, the traffic out there, I think you'd agree with me if you've been out there, is, is, there's already substantial traffic out there. And none of that is related to any development out there. Currently, there's two schools and one residential property on Old Guard Road. So I, so I, you know, submit to you that the traffic problem is not one that this development's gonna cause. The traffic problem is one that's already there, based on the schools. And there's, Georgia law distinguishes between what they call project improvements and system improvements. And in a rezoning, a rezoning can be conditioned on project improvements, which would be something like, you know, putting around about at your development, XL, Dcel lanes, add a red light, an emergency access point, some of those type things. But the law doesn't allow, and it's actually unconstitutional, to require a developer to make system improvements to a piece of property. And what a system improvement is, is a property, or, excuse me, an improvement that benefits the, the system in that area as a whole. So in other words, you know, creating a new access point for all the excess traffic from traffic that's not necessarily related to your development, that would be a system improvement. And it, so it'd be an unconstitutional request, I believe. And in addition, it's just strictly practically impossible. So that, that's where we are with, with the traffic. It's important to note that, in the Planning Department's report, I know we're gonna hear from them in just a moment, but the traffic before this development was, was at Level B. And after this development, the Planning Department says it's still going to be Level B. So in other words, in other words, the traffic classification level's not going to change based on this development. So I, so I don't, I don't really know what the basis would be to require millions of dollars of investment from a, from a developer who's not going to change the, the traffic classification. And so finally, I know, I know this is going to be, you know, all rezonings are like this, but this one particularly, I think, is gonna be a delicate balancing act of you all, you know, balancing the, you know, the legitimate traffic and safety concerns that the school district has versus, you know, this rezoning and the benefits and improvements of that rezoning. So, but I just appreciate you all remembering that, some of the points that we raised here. And then additionally, I'm gonna have Mr. Bowers come up, and he's just gonna very briefly show you a few slides and just talk very briefly about, about the development as a whole. Thank you.
Alright, good evening, council members, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for your time. So I'm gonna try to be as brief as I can, but I'm pleased to propose a hundred and fifteen-unit, age-focused gated community on fifty acres, located on Old Guard Road in District Two. With this community, we are seeking to provide the active adult population of Columbus with an age-tailored, high-quality product in the rapidly-expanding North Columbus market, something which is desperately needed in this city. Before I really get into this, though, I'd like to congratulate this body in the great city of Columbus on the AARP age-friendly designation that you celebrated last month. I applaud the public commitment that Columbus has made to becoming a more age-friendly city, and look forward to serving as an advocate and helping Columbus along the way to achieving the eight domains of livability. I'm sure everybody knows, but Domain Number Three of the Eight Domains of Livability Housing States, AARP surveys consistently find that the vast majority of older adults want to reside in their community for as long as possible. Doing so is possible if a community has housing options that are suitable for differing incomes, ages, and life stages. When differentiating between the different senior categories or life stages, they can be broken down into three distinct groups: go-go, slow-go, and no-go. We aim to serve the go-go senior group. These are the active adults who are over the age of fifty-five, who are not in need of healthcare-based housing or meal services. In the Columbus active adult housing sector, it's important to note that virtually all of the housing in the senior space is either traditional for-sale housing in a non-age-focused community, nursing homes, apartment buildings, or income-restricted housing. None of these options would meet the needs or be acceptable to the individuals we look to serve. We seek to provide an option to those in the fifty-five-plus age group who, for any number of reasons, prefer to stay in a home environment, would prefer to conserve capital, are not looking to invest in a forever home, would like something new and modern, to avoid maintenance, and to live in a quality, age-tailored, single-family community, not in an apartment building. We believe, especially since COVID-19, that a large number of seniors would prefer not to live in an apartment building, take an elevator, or multiple flights of stairs when they come and go, and essentially live in a forced communal environment. Notwithstanding COVID, it's important to remember that most people aged fifty-five plus have not lived in an apartment since they were young. And the option to live in a homestyle community and not have neighbors on all sides, above and below, has not been available to the market. So the choice until now has been to make a substantial financial investment or move into an apartment. We want to provide a new, better option. In the Columbus fifty-five-plus or senior age group, there are approximately forty-eight thousand individuals, which, when considered as one, is one of the largest demographic groups in the city. Yet they remain critically underserved with quality active adult housing. Also, an interesting fact you may know is that each day in the US, roughly ten thousand people turn sixty-five. This age group has a minimal impact on its surrounding community in regard to traffic load and school burden. According to the US Census, approximately six percent of seniors who have school-aged, or do have school-aged children living in their home. Based on these numbers, it can be expected that an active adult community consisted of, consisting of roughly a hundred and fifteen households could add approximately ten children to the local school burden, as Austin said earlier. Additionally, our marketing and floor plan selection will be targeted toward individuals who do not have children. A large number of units in this neighborhood will contain only two bedrooms, which typically are not attractive, or not an attractive option to families with children. Also, our amenities selection, which I will cover shortly, as well as our HOA and compliance rules, will be strictly targeted toward go-go seniors and would not be attractive to a family with school-aged children. Based off conversations with traffic engineers, a neighborhood of this side, size would generate an expected one-hundred car trips per day. These numbers are based, as, as I said, based on the traffic engineers and independent research. With the daily number of trips and the existing three-lane road, it can be concluded that this neighborhood would create zero impact on the existing traffic patterns in the exist, in the immediate area. Also, the AAA Foundation for Traffic Safety Survey has shown that senior drivers drive thirty-five percent less than other age groups, which further decreases the amount of traffic that can be expected to come from this community. Lastly, as far as traffic is concerned, the issues present on Old Guard Road are primarily confined to the center-turn lane during school pickup and drop-off times only, while the travel lanes, which our residents would be the ones using, will remain unrestricted for travel. It is anticipated that most residents in this neighborhood will not have school-aged children, and therefore will not be trying to access the school pickup and drop-off line, and adding to these, or adding to the backup during these times. Just a little more on the homes we're gonna have in the neighborhood. The homes in this proposed development will range from approximately twelve-hundred square feet to over eighteen-hundred square feet, and will be built to Class A, high-end design, and quality specifications throughout. Most homes will have a two-gar garage, smaller units will have a one, and homes will include such features as nine-plus-foot ceilings, open floor plans, private patios, and/or screen porches, granite or similar countertops, deluxe appliances and fixtures, and a combination of wood-style and carpeted floor areas. A limited number of homes may have a second floor with a caregiver suite for individuals who would like to age in place. Amenities in this gated community will include extensive landscaping, a spacious clubhouse with multiple-use areas, pardon me, and a lifestyle activity center, which will contain things such as a fitness center, crafts area, chef's kitchen, and library. Our common area features include a zero-entry saltwater pool, multiple pickleball courts, a large communal patio with barbecue grills, walking trails, a dog grooming station, dog parks, open green spaces, and rotating exterior art and sculpture exhibits. This community is sorely needed in our growing city by a large number of its citizens, and will fulfill a necessary service. This past Sunday, there was a very interesting piece on Sixty Minutes, which focused on skyrocketing rent and housing prices. The main contributor to this national crisis is the lack of new housing being built. It's estimated, based on research conducted by Redfin, a national realty group, that you, that the US is short approximately four million housing units. And if a proactive approach is not taken to new development, this number will only grow larger and create a more dire crisis. Columbus is also feeling the effects of this crisis. In the past five years, market rent per unit has increased roughly thirty percent in both North Columbus and Midland. Without substantial development, it is projected that by 2020, market rent will increase another thirty percent. This is an issue that can be fixed through new, high-quality residential construction, and we want to help. So last point I have, and a point that's very close to my heart, as a service-disabled retired Staff Sergeant from the Army, who chose to make Columbus my home after retirement, is that this neighborhood could provide the large number of retirees from Fort Benning an option to be able to continue living in this great city. As mentioned earlier, a new service retiree's options are to make a substantial financial investment or to move into an apartment. This is not a possibility or acceptable for many of the new service members, or newly-retired service members, so they choose instead to leave Columbus and move elsewhere so that their needs can be met. I would like to help Columbus retain these great Americans and serve our veterans in a manner consistent with what they deserve. I'd like to thank you all for your time tonight and for your consideration. We'd be happy to take any questions that anybody may have.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Councilor Garrett?
I, I was just gonna speak, because I do have personal knowledge of this. Since my wife's the administrator at Spring Harbor, they, I mean, the, this, this market is continuing to grow. And what I like about this is that it's something different than the other facilities are offering. And plus, it's kinda creating like a cluster in North Columbus that's around the VA area for the military folks, and also within short driving distances of restaurants for the people who are independent. But, I mean, I really like the idea, it's, I think it's something different from what I've seen. And I just, just based on my personal experience from my wife's career, it's, it's certainly something I think Columbus could support.
Thank you. Councilor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, it's a very interesting concept, and I will say that there's been much requested, much need for a retirement community that's being proposed. I haven't seen a design like this in a long, long time. Matter of fact, a lot of what you're seeing in the retirement community, and people don't really think about it as economic development, but it is. It's one of the biggest economic development engines that, that you can have in a community, because retirees have income coming in, and they spend a lot of money within communities. Right now, one of the largest retirement communities in the state of Georgia is Harris County. So having a concept that's attractive, that's being presented, and there are a few that's in the district I represent, and they're sold out. I mean, the, anytime a for-sale sign goes up, they're, they're off the market. People tend to like them, and there's not enough, and people ask for them, especially a gated community, which, that's what I'm recognizing here. But in saying that, I know there's some, some, I guess, some obstacles that could be, or perceived obstacles that need to be kind of talked through, and I, I think that's fine to do that. I will say, I look at this as a very defined development. I mean, it's not like complex enough that you gotta figure it out, it is what it is. And I like it from that standpoint, and I also recognize that there's just a few parcels of land there. And the road is what it is, the land is what it is, the area is what it is. And whether you're five, ten miles away, or you're right next door, it is what it is. And I don't see many changes there, it's just a matter of finding what is the best fit for that area. That land is gonna be used somehow, some way. I think residential is the right thing, and you can make an argument, whether it's large lots or small lots, depending on how they're used. In this case, as you had just explained, and the statistics and data show that there's least impact from a, an older populace that tends not to, empty nesters, let's just call them empty nesters, or the retirement community. But you tend to go with a larger house and a larger footprint, a larger development. There's gonna be more children, more cars, more, you gotta look at it, you know, how it's kind of, how it all kind of plays out. So you, when I say, when I talk about a defined development, that's kind of what I mean. I will, Mr. Bowers, I would like you to consider, and I'm actually gonna request it, I hope it's gonna be okay with you, but one of the things we deal with, with these developments, and we want to make sure that we're protecting citizens, because what is being proposed, you know, is very attractive, and councils sometimes makes their decisions on what's being proposed, but then at the end of the day, things change. And sometimes it goes in a different direction, and you get a whole different new development, or something else goes there that wasn't talked about before. And when we give these approvals on rezoning, that can happen. So what I would like to do is, this development, what attracts me is exactly what you're proposing, which I think sets it different, again, defined from all these other developments that are out there. I would like to put a condition, ask you to accept a condition that this proposed development be based on the site plan, be, uh, uh, that it would be as proposed on the floor plans and the elevations that you are presenting. In other words, everything you're presenting here and you're telling us, that's the condition I want. If it changes, then it goes back to A1, and it has another opportunity for a public hearing. And I think that's the right thing, I just think that's the responsible thing in our community. And we do that here and there, a lot of us call it a reversionary clause, but we're always told by the city attorney not to do those kind of things. So you add it in as a, as a condition. And I think what I'm doing here is your site plan, what you're proposing, which is a development that has buffers all around it, that has a gated community, it's, it's all laid out in section. That is the plan, the site plan, your elevations, your designs that you just laid out, your floor plans. Those are the conditions. And if you change, you know, we'll have to rework these things out. I think there's some latitude that you can work with your development, you know, architectural designs and things like that, but, you know, pretty much the, the, the meat on the bone of what you're trying to do, I'd like to put that in a condition and ask you to agree to it.
Yeah, we're, we're happy to do that. The, the only point I'd make is just...
And let me, let me, let me just say this. I had another development that came into the district several years back, and I asked the same request, and the developer is following through it. Matter of fact, I think it's the developer that lives right there, off of Old Guard Road.
Okay.
And he's doing it, and he's, I believe he's doing it off of River Road now. And we put the conditions on there that he would stay with the site plan, with the concepts that was laid out, and he's following through with it. So it's the same request, it's not like I'm asking something different. But I do this to protect the residents in the area, or at least to give it another chance to have a public hearing. Because I do agree, if it does change and it goes, let's just say it goes back to A1 or some other concept, you may have to relook at the, the impact on it from that standpoint. So it just gives a, an opportunity to, and I think that's good, I think that's good government.
Sure, and we, we don't, we don't, we have any opposition to doing that. My only request would just be that we just have enough leeway that, as we go through the engineering phase and all that, that we can accommodate whatever engineering wants us to do. So in other words, if they say this lot won't work here, but you can move it over here, you know, I think having that flexibility might, you know, it's not gonna change this character of the development, but it just might help us kind of push through whatever, whatever little hiccups might pop up in that engineering phase. But otherwise, we're totally fine with that.
I agree with you, a hundred percent. And I think they're, you know, they're gonna call the shots on that, so they'll, you know, you'll have to make some adjustments here and there, but for the most part, it, it will be the floor plans and design, and what you're trying, the elevations, and what you're trying to accomplish there.
Yeah, and I'm, you know, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I'm happy to draft that condition and send it to the city attorney and just get his approval on that, if that, if that's appropriate.
I'm, I'm good with that, thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
Thanks for entertaining it.
Sure.
Alright, Councilor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hear from Mr. Jones, and he's, Mr. Gibson said there was someone here from the school district. I'd like to hear from them before we get too much further into this.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Let me, let me start off by saying to you first and foremost, we have nothing against really this, this overall development itself. I'm sorry, I'm trying to talk into this thing as best I know how. We don't have a real, have a real concern in terms of the overall development. They are to be commended in terms of what they're trying to achieve here in the, in the market they're trying to strive for. There's nothing wrong with that. But we can't make a recommendation to this body if we don't... But we can't make a recommendation to this body if we don't have the right information to make that recommendation to you. Case in point is traffic. If we can turn the overhead on just for a second here, and-
It's on.
May I focus that thing in a little bit for us, John, if you can? And, you're getting there.
Maybe just pull up my power cord as well, if it's still up and that-
I want to concentrate on this area right here. There you go, John. That works right there. Bring it back out just a little bit more. Bring it out. That worked. That does, that does a good job right there. What I want to show you here is what we're up against as a community here now, as council members and as planning staff, and so what we're up against here. Right now, you've got, as I already said, there are three, there are three schools out there, three major schools, basically. You've got a high school, you've got a middle school, and you also got an elementary school. Both of that middle school and elementary school sit right there at the end of Old Guard Road, from that standpoint. We're seeing an awful lot of development pressure happen out in this area. We've got potential for another grocery store out there on Veterans itself. And John, if you go back to the thing and point for me, right there at the southwest corner of Old Guard and Veterans there, well, I can do, I guess I can do it here on this thing here as well. Excuse me, I'm sorry, John. I lost my thought here a second. All right, let's try this again. Right here, we've got a development underway right now, today, for a rehab hospital to go into that site. That's an area that we've got to deal with and so forth in terms of looking at things.
What is, where is that located? What's that address?
I'm sorry, it's right here at, if you can see on the map, I just drew the blue line around.
Yeah.
That's at Old Guard and Veterans.
Okay.
That's actually under consideration now. That's not something that, it's in the, it's in the pipeline now to happen on that.
Is that access where the schools are?
The schools, you got, I'll try, let me just find, do it here. You got, you got, basically you got Shaw here.
Northside.
Northside.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
Northside. Then you got, you got the middle school here, and you got the elementary school that sits right there at the end of that, from that concern. So, you got, the other thing you've got going on as well, though, and I'll show you again, on this, on this side, on this side of the property there at Old Guard and Veterans, is potential for mixed-use development to occur at that site. The concern there is, with all that pressure coming in onto that intersection, something's got to give. And something we got to make sure of is we can accommodate that traffic when it's all said and done. Now, I don't know about any, some of you, but I take a little bit of offense to the fact that anybody over fifty-five not would drive very much.
(laughing)
I think, I think I can speak for most of us in this room, that, yeah, we do drive, and we do get in our cars, and we do go places. And that's why I'm trying to convey to you, this thought is the fact that we're going to, we've got to make sure that we have accommodated for everything out there when we go through this whole process. I can't, as planning director, I cannot recommend something to you if I don't have all the information. We asked for a traffic study because we wanted to make sure that we didn't have any problems out there. Because I can tell you now, y'all know this better than I do. When the development is done, the developer didn't get the phone calls. They're not, they're not calling, they're not calling the developer and saying, "What's the problem out here?" They're calling each and every one of you. They're calling me. And they want to know how this happened, or what's going to happen, what's, what it's going to take to do this. And so, it's all due diligence on our part, from the planning department's part, to make sure we have all the information. We didn't get all the information. And we can't make a recommendation to approve this for you, even with conditions or anything else. You also got to remember also, John, go back to that, if you will, and kind of, kind of zoom out one more time for me. In fact, if you will, there's an aerial on that, on that map, slide over to that aerial right there. This gets a better, this gives a better representation, really, of out there. This, this area we're showing here is site. This area right here, though, are the apartments, council-approved back in 2018, that are actually under construction today. It's going to put, it's going to put a tremendous load on that, on that as well, involved with all that. We've got also some development concerns also on the north side of Old Guard, between Veterans and this, this piece of property as well, that folks are either going, coming there with single-family homes to build, or may have another development of this type. My concern to you is, we're just trying to make sure we take care, with all due diligence again, about what's going to happen on this site, and make sure we take care and protect it, so that the folks that do live in these areas know they can get in and out of their site easy, or they're not going to have some problems. Now, this is a hundred and fifteen, hundred and sixteen lot proposal to you. That's great. But sometimes, sometimes, you don't need that many lots. I mean, it makes economic sense, I agree, I agree with that, but maybe it's better to scale that back so you can, we can accommodate the traffic for it. Again, I don't know that without that study. And that's the reason we denied it, and that's why we were asking for your consideration on this as well. If we had gotten the study, yeah, maybe we would have done that, but I'm not in the business to make assumptions for you. I'm here to make sure we have all the facts and give it to you straight up, so you can make an intelligent decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Is there someone here from the school district?
Welcome.
So, I'm Ward Odom. I'm the senior director of facility maintenance and interim director of construction from Skew County School District. First of all, at the school's growth, I want to say, first of all, we celebrate growth in the school district because all the children that we have, and we have plenty of rooms. So, that is what we celebrate, and that is not our concern at this place. Traffic flow is concerning at this, at these two sites. And the properties that we have, the north side and the Veterans, which is the middle school and the elementary school, the traffic flow on that, on that road is what we're really concerned about. And that's what the, we want to see the study along with, see how it was. The schools, when we acquired them, were developed under the zoning that they are currently, and the traffic was based on that, and we just want to see what it will look like with a change. And that is what our concern is.
Okay, any questions? Counselor Davis?
Mr. Mayor, ma'am?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I went out there this afternoon, and it was after the schools had dismissed. No traffic whatsoever. It was, it was beautiful. But I've heard from a number of parents and grandparents who go out there during pickup time from those schools, and you can sometimes hardly get through there because of the traffic. That, that is a concern to me. One of the other concerns to me, and, and Mr. Jones, you may be able to answer this, the apartments that are being built, abutting this property, how many apartments are those, are up there?
Counselor Thomas, I'm afraid I'm not a good source for you on that. I don't have a number in front of me. All I can say is a buku of them right now being built out there. I mean, it's, when I, when I rode there about a month or so ago to look to see how, what kind of progress they were making, I was, I was just amazed. Many apartments were actually going in there.
One of my concerns with the apartments and with this facility is that right now on Old Post Road, I mean, not Old Post, Old Guard Road, there are no sidewalks. So that if kids are coming from those apartments, or by chance, the ten that you mentioned living in this community are going to those schools, there, there are no sidewalks, and that would be one of the things that I would want to see if we approved this, this rezoning, is to make sure that there is, there are sidewalks along that road so that people can get in and out. And Mr. Jones, I've forgotten if it was Mr. Gibson or who, talked about a Level B. Do you, that, that it was at a Level B, and it's still at a Level B? What, I don't know what a Level B is.
Well, you'll, you'll see, you'll see in our staff report, we do it every time we do it. We do basically a land use analysis of terms, what the land itself will generate in terms of traffic. And we also tell you what the, what the road classification is for that particular road. A, A is basically, is wide, is, there's five different carriages. It runs from A to F. A is basically wide open, you stand in the middle of the road and never get hit by a car. F means it's a parking lot, because you can't move. In this case, it's running at a B. But we do that for everything.
Okay.
And that's fine. But with everything else we've got going on out there in terms of all the developments that is occurring, we want to make sure we don't have another potential problem in, in this development, because there are going to be other developments, we're going to have to do the same kind of analysis and so forth with them. But we want to make sure we don't have that problem. But again, I can't tell you that without that information and without that study. I just can't give it to you.
I, I also, until these apartments and if this subdivision goes in there, I, I don't believe there are any residential residences in that area right now. Is that from Old Guard down to Veterans?
I want to say there's, I'd be either running off memory here, there's either one or two on that north side, or potentially one or two will be built in the near future. That's the information I have.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just concerned about the traffic, and, you know, given, as I said, at four o'clock in the afternoon, there is no traffic, but it, as I understand it, from about one thirty to about three thirty, it's difficult to get through there. And because of the traffic and because of the, those, it's a three-lane road, but it's, it's still difficult to, to maneuver. So, whatever it's going to take to, to respond to that, I would be very interested in hearing. I think that's it right now.
All right, Counselor Davis?
Thanks, Mayor. And I wanted, I'm glad the, the school district has come up to share their concerns. Let's just talk about that for a minute. You've got land that's already rezoned there, and we have been dealing with a traffic problem. Mayor Henderson, you and I have worked on this many, many years. We finally got the improvements out on Veterans Parkway and got done with the turning lanes and all, but look, you got three schools there, and the traffic is what it is. That's not going to change. That's not going to change. What really needs to be looked at is, and I'm just going to say it, I mean, I'm on the development side, I'm on the residential side, I'm on the growth in District Two. I don't do schools, but I know that that's where progress is going, and it's moving in that direction, and I would have to say that the school district needs to start looking at maybe building some new schools. Because it's not going to get any better, and the growth is continuing to come, and there's going to be more residential developments. Now, let's just look at this logically. I said earlier, two miles, five miles, ten miles, maybe over on Hubbard Road, maybe further out, Veterans Parkway, there's new developments, residential developments coming. That's traffic. It's going to be on that road. So, would you want the cars driving from those places to get to the school, or would you rather have the children walk across the street? You know, I kind of look at it a little bit different logically when you think about things like that. I don't think those people are going to be driving their kids to school, if they have kids. So, that's the least, when I talk about the least impact, that's the least impact. Now, the stuff-up that was talked about in the front, the commercial and all, that's not changing. And that's going to happen whether you do a traffic study or not. But I think that, I mean, I am okay without a traffic study on this, and I'll tell you why. One, I think sometimes developers have challenges that they have to pay a lot of money, that at the end of the day, you're going to get the same answer. And I think that's the same situation here, that the, whether it's a hundred, a hundred and fifty, they're going to get the same answer, most likely, at the end of the day, if you keep it A1, which is what it is now. Most likely, the impact is going to be greater with the number of cars, because you're going to have more families, more children, more cars. That's just what comes with bigger houses and bigger lots. It does. And you're still going to have the same situation. So, they could go in and they could do that, and they don't need anybody's approval, they don't need any traffic studies, because it already matches up. The apartments are there. You've got a limited amount of land, and the only thing really that can go in there, I would not approve any more apartments. For, for houses, the land's going to be cleared. If it stays at A1, the land's going to be cleared because of the topography. It's not changing whether you have one hundred, a hundred and twenty lots, or fifty lots. That land's going to be cleared. I mean, that's just what's going to happen. So, when you look at it from aesthetics and all across the board, whether it's A1 or SFR4, you're just talking about some smaller lots, and when a developer is trying to put in something nice, if he's able to do some more lots, he can do more on that land. And in this case, what I like about this development is, and everybody on this council knows how I'm detailed, and I scrutinize these developments all the time that come through, these requests on rezonings. We don't get a lot with buffers. You've got buffers here, which I like. I don't even have to put a condition in for a buffer, because the buffers are natural, and I based it on a site plan, so that's great. I think when I said define, the traffic count is going to be what it's going to be, and I think we can define that. The planning department's been doing this for years. Mr. Jones has been around for years. We've got models that are already there that we know exactly what the car count is. And I'm not going to be able to tell you what that rehab center is, but that land is zoned, and there's going to be, if they want to put a building there, there's nothing we can do about it. Now, would I agree? No, but what kind of traffic changes do you make at that intersection to change things? You can't. Not under, not only the proposed overlay, we have overlay district too, by the way. So, I mean, whatever goes there is going to go there, and they're going to approve the entrances as is, and a traffic study's not going to matter, because the law allows them to use the land that's there, and it's already been zoned. Would I approve any more apartments? No. Would I approve anything that's going to have a, what I would consider a significant impact? No. But I do know more and more residential developments are happening in the district I represent, and it's still going to have that impact on that school, whether it's a block away, across the street, or it's ten miles away, it's still going to have that impact. So, I can't just stop development. I, I don't think the city can stop development for those reasons, just put a halt to everything. We have to start planning and looking at how we're going to solve those problems, and right now, we may have to start looking at some more classrooms. And I really think that needs to be the discussion, is we need to start looking at more schools in District Two or somewhere, whether it's in Counselor Allen's district or my district, in that general area, because we know growth's going there. We've been talking about this for how many years? About growth going that way? Every time they do the master plans, we know the significant increase in the populace. It's, it's not going away, and the schools are the schools. So, I don't, you know, when I add it up from my point of view, it, you know, it's going to continue to happen, and we're going to keep asking for traffic studies, but in reality, you know, what do you do? You know, we ask the traffic study, if it comes back, and somebody thinks it's more cars, you just going to tell them you can't do the development? You know, do we wait for another one that comes, few cars under, that we don't know if it is or not? I mean, it's just, you see what I'm saying? It's, it's, I think, when I look at this, like I said, and I don't have, look, I'm, I'm trying to look at this objectively. I don't know these gentlemen, and, and certainly, I'm trying to balance all the growth, we've got a tremendous amount of growth in our district, and I'm trying to balance all that, but I do know that you're kind of limited somewhere, and the path of progress is going to continue, and you're somewhat limited in what you can do with that. You know, I'm concerned about those quarries over. Those quarries are what they are, but there's some, some talk of progress there, you know, some expansion there, but I, I do think we need to have that. I would hope that you could take that thought back to the school district and ask him to consider that. I did talk to some of the school representatives before. You know, God rest his soul, he's passed now, but, but we had those conversations about the need for more classrooms. I hope that we see that, because that's really the only solution I see. I don't think, we can talk about the traffic counts for a long time, but it's really not going to matter at the end of the day. You're going to need to take the traffic off the road and redirect the school traffic somewhere else, because the school traffic's not going to change unless you redirect those students somewhere else, or limit the number of students in the school. And that's kind of, you know, and that's kind of how I'm viewing it. And I don't, I'm not- Uh, and I don't, I'm not, um, I'm not arguing the point, okay? Because I respect the position and I understand it. I'm just trying to throw out a little different view of it from a, from a different angle, uh, and how I'm looking at it. And when we make these decisions, you try to express and you try to share with the community how you're thinking and how you're processing, your thought process. And that's kind of where I'm at right now. And, and honestly, with the, with the traffic study, I, I know where it's going and to ask him to pay 20, these people pay 25-plus thousand dollars to do it and I know what the answer's going to be? You know, it's somewhat of, of, you know, it's a waste of money. I mean, it is. Uh, but I do respect the planning director's point of view because that's what they do and at the end of the day, that's his job, that's their job, and they need somebody to tell them that we're okay in doing it a different way. That's why we have the BCA, that's why we have council, that's why we have an opportunity to work through that. But he, they're doing their job. I mean, they do that with every development, but sometimes we say, okay, let's do it this way and it, and it works. Um, and that way he can be fair to all the other developers that come in and say the same thing. I held my ground, but council said it's okay. Um, so that's my perspective on the, uh, on the traffic study. As far as the sidewalks and all, the city manager, we've got sidewalks around. We've been, uh, putting them, trying to put those around schools. And I would think that the infrastructure funds that we have are sufficient enough to put sidewalks in there if something like this came to, to try to deal with some of those matters. But I want to also say that Old Guard Road has a turning lane, which is totally different from like Double Churches Road and some of the other roads that we desperately need improvements on as well. We haven't had improvements there in a long time and we're still, development's still just going everywhere. So, um, uh, you know, that's, that's kind of it in a nutshell, so thank you.
Thanks, sir.
And Mayor, let me, let me say this. I, I did, I did have.
I know on the, uh, on the staff report, there were no comments that were put on there by anybody, but I did receive, I've been out of the country, okay? I've been back in the country in less than 48 hours. So I did have an email that I saw and I have not been able to address by, I think it's one of the residents out there. And, you know, they do have a home there. I mean, I was, didn't even know that there were homes out there, but there are some homes which tell me that there could be more. Um, I, I don't know how that's going to work out when you, you, you don't have roads that are going further into the depth of the land, but, um, I, I, I do want to get back with that person. They may be here tonight, but I do want to get back with them and talk to them about some of their concerns as well.
Okay. And I just want to say, uh, not to be argumentative, that the, uh, the growth of the classroom count, uh, is we have plenty of, uh, room for, uh, new students. Um, just going from the 40 acres that's talked about and having one driveway per acre versus four driveways per acre and the increased amount of cars that would be there on that one-way road, that's, that's what our concern is. It's not the growth or the classroom. Okay?
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
So, did you have one more thing?
Well, I just.
We've got other folks that want to be heard.
I've taken up a lot of your time, but I did just want to address the, I heard, uh, maybe Counselor Thomas throw out a condition on sidewalks and I just wanted to define, you know, what, what that was that we might be agreeing to, if that's a condition that's out there. But that's, that's my point.
All right. Did you want to? Oh, Counselor, uh, Thomas?
Um.
Hang on. There we go.
Uh, I don't know. All I know is, as I drove through there this afternoon and saw that apartment complex and saw the sign where it said, um, your, um, complex would be going in, uh, down to the middle school, there, well, there are no sidewalks at all on, on, uh, Old Guard.
Right.
And if there are, I, I understand your point that there probably are not going to be a lot of kids in your development, but in the apartments, there may be. And I just want us to be sure that we are giving those students the safest way to get to the school. And the, the planning department, uh, has worked with this, um, many times about sidewalks and what we need and so forth. And so, um, you know, that's, that's my concern is that they have some, um, safety, um, way to get to, safe way to get to school, particularly from those apartments, which I know are not your concern, and the, um, the residential area there to both the middle school and the elementary school.
Sure. And just speaking for our development, I, I know there'd be no issue, you know, to the extent that sidewalks would be helpful in our subdivision, there'd be no issue putting sidewalks in, in front of, you know, in front of our property, getting towards the, the middle school or wherever. And I, I guess too, you, really briefly, you raised a very interesting point of, you know, the, the apartment complex is already there. It's, uh, don't hold me to the numbers, but I believe it's 262 units that's planned to go in.
Two fifty-two.
Two sixty-two, I believe. But don't, don't hold me to that number.
Okay.
But I would just point out that that's twice the size of this development. Four years ago, there, there was no talk of a traffic study, no, the school district didn't request any traffic study, school impact, any of those things. And that, that development was twice the size of this one. So that's just something to consider as well when we think about, you know, the zoning process being constitutional, making sure, you know, equal protection under the law to, to everyone. So that, that's, that's another small concern. And I, and I would say, you know, the, the school district mentioned, um, the school representative mentioned that, you know, school impact wasn't an issue, but at the PAC hearing, they requested that we do a traffic study and school impact study. So that's, you know, that's just my thoughts. I, I'm not sure when the school impact didn't become an issue because it was the PAC hearing it was and we were asked to do a school impact study. Um, but thank you so much. I've taken up a lot of your time. I appreciate it.
All right. Mayor, we'll get back to a vote on these possible conditions in a minute, but let's hear from these other folks. Ma'am, come on up, give them your name and address for the record.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I, I think he addressed, uh, he acknowledged that they would put sidewalks internally.
Okay.
And, but not external of their, uh, development. So, which is.
We, we would do that sort of out, just outside our development, but we wouldn't anticipate doing it in front of the other apartment complex.
Yeah, I understand.
He's talking about adjacent to his property.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, members of the council. Um, as a teacher, I always have a backup plan. I wasn't sure of you guys' technology setup, so I made you all colored bound copies of my data for tonight. So, um, I am Beth Leatherwood and I am the resident. I live on 2040 Old Guard Road and I'm here tonight with my husband Brett to oppose the rezoning of Banana Bay LLC. Our property is adjacent to Banana Bay and shares a boundary lines with a proposed development. My driveway is directly across from Veterans Middle School and you can see on the first page, the White House in the box, that's my property, and my parents, who are 55 and older, they're actually 63, they are building next door to me. So we own a little over seven acres right there. And so those are our two homes in that area, if you've been out there to see it. According to the filed public records, Banana Bay purchased this property on 4/26 of 2021 for $837,500. After paying this large sum of money for the property, Banana Bay has apparently decided that they needed more housing density. I have provided each of you with a packet and please take a look at the first page of the packet. I have marked my property lines using white lines and the White House icon. Our house is directly across from Veterans Memorial Middle School. Um, it is my understanding that Banana Bay has repeatedly denied requests by the city for a traffic study. Austin Gibson, the lawyer for Banana Bay, mentions a $20,000 to $25,000 price for the study in a previous meeting, but state that the price was not the reason it was not obtained. So why wasn't it obtained if price was not a factor? It's because the traffic study won't help them, as we have defined tonight. I don't need a traffic study to tell me about the traffic problems on Old Guard Road and I'm so thankful as an educator for 15 years that Judy Thomas brought up the point about sidewalks because kids are always in my best interest and the idea of kids walking down those roads with no sidewalks at that very, very high-density time makes me nervous as I have two kids in that neighborhood as well, two sons. Please, I have firsthand knowledge of the traffic problems. Please turn to page two of your packet. This picture was taken by me five days ago during our extreme rainstorm, so forgive me, there are water droplets on my windshield when I was snapping that photo. I waited for 20 minutes on Old Guard Road to get to my home. Banana Bay stated in January 5th PAC meeting that the school traffic was confined to the center lane. That is not true and you can see this from that photo. The traffic is so bad that the parents waiting for their children often idle, both in the turn lane and the straight lane. And for those of you who have been in a parent pickup line, try to pass a mama in the parent pickup line when she's been waiting there for an hour. She's not happy and those are things that we experience every day. The next two photos in the packet are still shots captured from drone footage taken on March 24th. You can see the cars waiting in the straight lane to pick up their children. The problem here is that cars try to pass the waiting parents by using the turn lane and they become victims of road rage. The waiting parents yell, they even swerve into the next lane to prevent you from, from passing them. And we took this drone footage, we do have a live video of that. If you would like to see that, I have that in my PowerPoint. Um, Banana Bay says that they will, sorry, I lost my place. Banana Bay says that they will market their development to 55 and older. First, by the Georgia statute 44560 D3, the development cannot be age-restricted. Secondly, any increased density will be bad for the area, whether the residents are 18 to 80. And I might go on to say that Mr. Bowers mentions that he aims for the go-go seniors, a group of adults 55 and older. If we're talking about a traffic issue and they're go-go residents, then they're going to be going too, which is going to cause even more traffic. We don't need any more high-density housing in this area. Banana Bay might mention that Greystone Apartments are already nearby. However, we built this house knowing that the Greystone Apartments were going in. We never expected an increased density to be right next door. Even though I am the only house existing currently next door to Banana Bay, in about five months, my parents will also be there with me. Banana Bay never approached me about rezoning this until yesterday after I heard that, after they heard that I would oppose their request. As I was getting out of school, I got a phone call and it was just asking me what my concerns were, but never before had I heard from anyone at Banana Bay about this. I have watched Banana Bay's previous presentations to the PAC. Please use caution and ask lots of questions to make sure this rezoning is not a disguise to get approval for high-density for-rent product. Even if not, there are no assurances of an HOA keeping that project in the future. My biggest question is, if a 55 and older person does purchase this property, what's to say that they can't turn around and rent it out to someone who is lower than 55? Or turn around and sell it in six months to someone that is younger than 55, that has multiple children, which then increases the numbers in our already full classroom sizes in school? In any event, we don't need any more increased density in the area. To conclude, my husband and I urge you to please deny this request to rezone. Please make Banana Bay keep their current zoning, which they thought was good enough in April, to pay $837,500 for. Thank you for your time.
I want to mention one other thing, you know, regarding on the, on the mound, this Banana Bay's current property, if we rezon this property or if this property gets rezoned, there's an additional 50 acres right next door.
He wants you to use the mic.
Okay. To your right, to your right. Am I right?
Need to turn it on, Bruce, please.
Sorry about that. Um, if you notice, Banana Bay's property right here is 50 acres. If this zoning is approved, then must say the 50 acres next door to it doesn't get the same zoning rights in the future. And that could then increase it by another 115 properties. And that's it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank y'all. We, I think we need to hear from those, if there's anybody else in opposition first.
Okay. Anybody else opposed, want to come up?
We've got a couple of counselors with questions. Uh, Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Um, it's my observation that this is not an isolated issue with cars around schools at this time of day. I travel the city quite a bit in my job and I see the same issue, um, on Edgewood in front of Clubview and Richards. I see the same issue on Reese Road, um, by Gention. So, uh, those are the two schools that I go by, well, I try to avoid at, at that time of day. And so I, I'm wondering if we don't do, we need to figure out a way to handle the traffic around the schools. Um, this is, I don't, this is, this is going to go on and continue no matter what goes there. And I would think that if children were there, if I were their mother, I'd have them walking to school. I wouldn't sit, I wouldn't sit in that line. So, um, it seems like maybe we should be talking about maybe, um, widening this road to give it, you know, give it more room for the, the cars to go in and out, but this is, this is a problem that's, that's around all the schools right now.
Yeah, and I, I would yield to our friends from the school district, but this year is especially tough because there are more parents taking their kids because we've had labor issues in hiring bus drivers. So the buses get there earlier and pick up, drop off later at night. So this year's been, I, I feel for y'all. We're having trouble too, but it's, it's been a challenge. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I just wanted, I wanted to, ma'am, I wanted to thank you for coming up and again, I apologize not being able to get back with you, but I, I really, I've been back in the country less than 48 hours. And I do have your email. I got your email. I got that, I think, last week was sent to me. I did, I was able to see that, uh, where I was, but I could not respond because I didn't, didn't have the service. So I apologize about that, but I do want to talk to you. This is on first reading, so I knew that coming here tonight, that I could do that. I already had a plan to talk to you, but some of the things I've talked about tonight, I, I, you know, the, the, we're going to have to find, you're right, we're going to have to find solutions, but I don't know if what we're talking about, the, the, we are talking about traffic because that, that's a problem. It's been a problem for a long time and, and the road is there. I don't foresee the road being widened anytime soon and I don't know where that money is to make it happen, but it would take a long time be, before it went through a bid process and on down the road. And the council members know how long it takes to get roads in. I'm trying to get Whitesville Road fixed right now because we've got a problem there at Double Churches. You guys know that with the, the school there. Um, but I do know we're going to have to start talking about more classrooms. I do know that's the way to take the pressure off the road. Uh, the land is there and, and whether you do A1, that's what I was talking about. I mean, we could keep it like it is, they would still clear it and they would still put lots there and it would still be the same. We're still talking about the same thing, yet they're continuing to do it. They could do the whole, for example, just, I didn't even know you guys were there. I drove there before I left. I drove back there to take a look at it. I'm like, wow, where do these houses come from? But you've bought a lot and you carved it out and it's there. Uh, you know, that land theoretically could be used continued like that and you're still going to have the same issues. And like I said, whether it was a mile away, you know, we do have a development right across the street, Dave Erickson, you know, I don't know the promenade that y'all, that that was built. It's totally different from this one, but that's a concept that you can tell, uh, from a traffic standpoint, uh, what I've seen is that it hasn't been, there hasn't been a lot of traffic there. There hasn't been a lot of traffic in some of these other developments that I'm familiar with in the district I represent. And that's why I talk about, I'm more concerned about the least, the least impact, okay? That's where I'm focused on, the least impact versus a, a larger impact. But whether it's Hubbard Road, what's happening now, whether it's Woolridge Road, whether it's, um, some of the other roads that are further out, I do know more developments coming and it's still the same cars. So whether it's there or further out, that's not going to solve that issue, but the land's going to be used somehow. And what I do like about this one, okay, is what I said, what if, if you were to come up here and they had a development there, uh, and they didn't have these buffers away from your house, I would be asking for a condition to put an undisturbed buffer in there. I would. And the council members know that. But they've got a, a buffer. What I like is they've got a considerable buffer, which I think is significant. We don't see those kind of things. Usually they put up a wooden fence. Usually, they put up a wooden fence. And the terrain, you know, the...
So they can't build in that?
Exactly. So whether it's natural or whatever, you don't have to look at a wooden fence, and it's not in your backyard. It could be in your backyard, but it's not going to be there in this case, which that...you know, it gives me some more confidence that I'm looking out for the residents and at the same time not being a hindrance to development because, like the attorney said, I mean, they have rights to develop the land. So, you know, in looking at these developments, there's going to be development there. I mean, that's just a fact, and we cannot stop that development. We can't say because there's traffic on the road, nobody can do anything with that land. That's illegal. You can't do that. But we're going to have to come up with a solution, and I'm saying that I don't think that...I think residential in its right component is going to be the least impactful. What we need to start real...is trying to get that traffic off the roads, and the schools are the central focus. So, you know, we're going to have to start looking at more schools, maybe in different areas, to direct that traffic in different ways. I mean, that's just a fact. And we should have had that conversation. I hope that conversation's been going on with the school district, and it should have been happening a long time ago. You've got to plan these things out. But that road, when that road was put in there, I mean, they knew development was coming. Everybody knew development was coming. Yeah, you could increase the size on it, but it's going to take a while to do that. And, you know, do you just sit back? Meanwhile, everybody else is developing around you two miles and all the way. It's still...we can't control that. Do we just tell everybody to stop? So, you know, we've got to figure this thing out, and at the same time, I'm very sensitive. Look, I'm very sensitive to your concern because I've got somebody building in my backyard right now. And we talk about it all the time, and I deal with those issues, but trying to balance it. But I do want to sit down...this is your...I want to have a conversation with y'all and talk about this more in detail. If you'll leave your inform...you...it is. I will call you. I will call you back.
My only concern with it all is the 55 and older restriction. Do you even...okay, I'm sorry. I usually talk loud because I teach middle school kids, so usually I use my teacher voice. Anyway, my only concern is the 55 and older. Will that be changed? How can they restrict that to an age?
Right.
Because that's against the law. They can't.
No, they don't. They...I mean, but the condition I put in there and defining it to the site plan, to the design plan, to the floor plan, to the elevations, that's really what I'm trying to capture for the area, is to make sure that that's a development. If they don't do that and it changes, it goes back to A1, and you get to have another public hearing, and see...and hear what goes on. They agreed to do that. That's what I asked them to do.
And I also will say the buffer is not...I'm going to be honest with you. I don't feel like the buffer is just a kindness buffer, just out of kindness. The granite in that area is so extreme that we weren't even able to build, you know, as much as we wanted to on that land, pull, things like that, because we hit granite. The place that my house is on is the only space on that piece of property that was buildable besides where my parents are building because of granite and the rock. So we've walked that piece of property, and we've seen the topography studies that are being done and the drilling for the massive amounts of granite that they've run into. So that place that they're able to put squish all of those houses onto is about the only place that it can be put because of the lay of that land. And my concern is, if they bought...if they spent that much money to buy that property, why not leave it the zoning that it is and just build houses in that zoning?
Well, you make a good point, but you've got to look at it as a positive, having that granite. There's a good thing because it keeps people from developing the land, and it stays in its natural state. Granite, sometimes when people are dealing with granite, it...the costs to build go up extremely higher, and so having a few more lots makes the development work. But the good thing for you or anybody else that was living in that area, and I don't think you're probably going to be the last one, there's probably going to be some others that are going to...I mean, there's usable land.
There's a couple of estate lots that have already been sold at that rate.
Exactly. There's usable land, and, you know, most likely, the landowners will probably, you know, whatever their desire is to do with the land, they may sell it. And the rock is going to be an issue, but I look at that as a positive thing because it limits what developers can do. And it may be in some of these other lots you're talking about that that becomes a factor, and people don't want to...people don't like developing in rock. They really don't.
I completely understand. I ran into that. We were in the building process for 12 months, and we ran into that rock, but we didn't differ from the plan that we originated. We didn't try to squish...I didn't turn around and resell it and try to get it rezoned to squish a couple of houses on it to get my money back, and that's my fear. And I'll hush my point because I think I've made it, but my fear is all of the houses being pushed into one little zone because that's the only buildable opportunity that they have, whether it be a buffer because they're in a floodplain, you've got granite, and this is the only buildable space that you have. What's to say that that squished 100 and some odd homes is not going to be put into the next 50 acres, and then we have a really, really big issue? I would love for it to all tie into Old Town because that is a beautiful community, but the fact of the matter is, it doesn't look like that is the direction Old Guard is going in, and we are jam-packed in that area. We are.
No, I agree with you. There's a lot of things we just don't have control over, but we've got to evaluate them and weigh them and balance them. You know, at one time, Mayor, you remember at one time when that massive...right where you live, there was a massive apartment complex that was going to come in there, and we went through this, and we were able to stop it. But they brought up the fact that there was a lot of...a lot of rock and all in that area, and it didn't happen. But we're either going to have to build more classrooms, or we're going to have to build a bigger road, something, but both of those are going to take a long time. Do we just stop in our tracks today and not do anything?
Name is Paul Olson, Aliba 13830, Uptoy Lake, Uptoy, Georgia. To give a solution to our problem, since it's an HOA bylaws and have it to where it prohibits subletting to not meet the criteria of 55 and older, and that's the answer to that.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Madam Clerk, did you have...
Yes, Mr. Mayor. If we could, for the record, have the last gentleman that spoke give his name for the record.
Oh.
The husband.
Yes, sir.
Oh, her husband.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm Brett Leatherwood.
I'm sorry.
Brett, B-R-E-T-T.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
All right, Mayor. We need to do some housekeeping on the Counselor Davis amendment with the site plan condition. We need to get a vote on that, just for the record.
All right, there's a...I guess Counselor Davis, that was a motion.
I put the motion in.
All right, there's a motion to condition it on making sure that any development is consistent with the site plan.
Right. Constructing...
Excluding...excluding any engineering required relocation.
Both site plan, floor plan, elevations, and development layout.
Okay. All right, and that was the motion as stated. Any second? All right, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, it'll be conditioned that way.
And then on the sidewalks, I mean, the developer is apparently okay with sidewalk construction on his property adjacent to Old Guard Road, if you want to get a motion on that.
I'll make that motion.
And that was to include sidewalks on the exterior of the property as well?
That was my understanding, on the outside of the entryways, I guess, going across.
All right, so what's your...what's your motion, Counselor Crabbe?
That has a condition that the developer provides sidewalks outside of his...the development on the street.
Adjacent to Old...adjacent to Old Guard Road on the developer's property.
All right, there's a motion and a second from Counselor Barnes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of that condition, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, it's conditioned. And that's all the lights from the councilors.
Just very briefly, I wanted to mention the...Ms. Leatherwood mentioned that state law doesn't allow you to discriminate based on age. That's true. Federal law's the same, but the Fair Housing Act gives exceptions where you can...you can restrict based on age for 55 and over communities as long as 80% of the community is that 55 and over. And the way you keep...and the way you keep...you keep it 55 and over is, you know, you do...you like the gentleman before said, you have HOA bylaws, and then as well, you have deed restrictions. In the deeds, you can restrict those properties to that 55 and over category. So that's just...you know, just a law point. Thanks very much.
Is your deed restricted as such?
It's not currently, but I have a condition if you guys would like...if you guys would like to read it into the record and vote on it. I'm happy to do that.
Pleasure of counsel. Is there a motion?
I'd add motion.
Motion in a second to add the...
Let's hear it, Brett, please.
I guess one...Mr. Bowers had one point on that.
Yes, I just do have one point on that. One thing with doing the full-blown age restriction, which we are comfortable with doing, is like I'd stated earlier, we do have folks that do retire out of Fort Benning that have not reached the age of 55 yet. We would like to be able to accommodate those individuals in this neighborhood. However, if the approval would be conditioned upon the age restriction, we are comfortable doing that.
Well, you could have 20% of that unit...of those units that will...
Yes.
For the military retirees.
Okay, and so would you like me to read this out loud? The rezoning of the subject property to SFR 4 is conditioned upon the development being "age restricted," in quotes, which means that at least one person is age 55 or older and at least 80% of the occupied units in accordance with the housing for older persons exemption set forth in the Fair Housing Act in 24 CFR Section 100.300 in the Code of Federal Regulations. So that's a defined term. So that's why it's so specific.
Well, it's a pleasure of counsel. There was a motion in a second. Is it still...Counselor Huff, you had the motion?
I made that motion.
You made the motion? All right, you made...and Counselor Barnes had the second? Counselor? All right. Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's the third condition.
Thank you.
All right, the ordinance is amended as we have noted with those three conditions. Now, it's up to counsel, but the plan is to bring it back for a second reading with these conditions in April. I assume you don't want it on the consent agenda next week.
Probably not.
Okay. We'll bring it back then at the first council meeting in April. I think it's the second Tuesday at 9:00.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep, we'll talk about all three of them. Okay, Mayor, next item up is the demolition ordinance for various structures listed. If anybody is in the audience when we call out these properties and the addresses and wants to be heard, please raise your hand. We've got Mr. Pruitt here to go through the list with us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have a total of 11 properties in front of you tonight totaling $212,231.
Okay, first property is 1,000 Peachtree Drive, working with Houses owner. Anybody present on that?
That's your property, ma'am? Okay, if you...you can come to the podium if you want. It's on first reading.
Come on up and give your name and address for the record, please, and then what your proposal is tonight.
Hi, good evening. We've partnered with...
Could you state your name and your address, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry. My name is Yolanda Durbin with Grant Living LLC. We have partnered with...working with Houses, and we are actually in the process of the permitting stage and are awaiting approval for that, have been for the last, I believe, two to three weeks. So as soon as that is approved, we will continue with the inside demo and the renovation of the property.
Any questions from counsel? Counsel...there's Counselor Huff.
You say you started your permitting two or three weeks ago?
Yes, it's been in permitting for probably about two weeks now.
Okay, what's the timeline? Have you talked with the gentleman next to you?
We...and forgive me, I haven't been. But I'm not...I am not aware of the conversations that are going on between the owner of the property and the permitting office, as I'm not privy to all of those conversations. But I do know that there was a conversation earlier today regarding moving forward with getting that permit, or there was a...excuse me, there was a document that was misplaced at the office by one of the office members that they're trying to find, and they're working that out, and probably we have to resend that to them because it was hand-delivered to the office, so that might be the holder.
Okay. I'm going to ask for him to update because unless he gives us some idea that he's been...he's met with you, talked to you, and gives us an idea about timeframe and whether he thinks you can get it done in a reasonable timeframe.
So I have a question. You said the permitting started a couple of weeks ago. How long has this...how long has the process been going on?
They have submitted for a building permit as of two weeks ago, so we're currently reviewing that documentation and assuming there's no issues or corrections that are needed, we would issue the permit within the next couple of weeks. The reason the property is on here is this has actually been on our list since 2011. It's one of our oldest properties. This owner bought it actually last year, but since it has been on the list that long, that's why we brought it forward. But I would certainly anticipate by second reading that they would have their permit and would have the opportunity to begin renovation work on the property.
So is your recommendation then that this organization be given a little bit more time?
Yeah, I think we can...my recommendation would be leave it on for now and let the permitting process play out and then see where we're at.
All right.
Okay.
It'll stay on...it'll stay on the list right now, but if you bring that...those documentation...that documentation in and get with Ryan Hill...
It's been submitted again because it...I guess it was supposed to be at the office, staff at the office, so we were just...we spelled that out.
Okay.
If you would...if you would...if you would stay until he finishes and touch base with him and let him...he'll let you know what you need to do.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is 2816 Baldwin Street, Joe and Lucinda Collier. Charlie Collier, anybody present? Okay, 608th Street, Philip and Thomas Real Estate. Okay, we've got people here. Come on up, please. Give them your name and address and what your proposal is or timeline.
I'm really here for a different reason. I do not have an ownership stake in this property. I have an emotional investment in this property. I live at 738 Broadway. My name is Fran Carpenter. I've talked to some of you about this building before and about the Liberty District in general before. I own property in the Liberty District. I bought a derelict building about five years ago. The windows were broken out of it, and people looked at it and said, there's no way that building can be saved. But I now have saved it. It's a lovely art studio, and I also donate my time to the Board of Historic and Architectural Review. I just fundamentally have a problem with the fact that I feel we're at cross purposes with the city sometimes. These are historic properties. This last property is a historic property. It's in a historic district. And there are...there is code in our municipal code that does not allow for demolition by neglect. You should enforce that code. I have a problem with the fact that our city doesn't enforce that code. There are fines that can be levied, but the problem is that the property is owned by an individual real estate investor, and that person can't be compelled to sell that property to someone who will actually turn it into something. There's a shell of a building on Broadway. It's the old Crest Building. The facade still stands there today. I don't know what will ever be done with that building, but we've had the foresight to save it. And I feel the same way about this building. This building was stabilized. There were steel girders placed inside the building, and the...since the new owner has purchased it, the roof has caved in on the other two buildings. There's a book...I don't know if any of you have ever seen this book or read this book, but if you haven't, I would really ask all of you to do so. It's called This Place Matters. This place matters. I know that there is...there are dreams of redeveloping the Liberty District, and I'd love to see that happen. But I think if we lose all of the history in the process, we've made a big mistake. Architectural treasures cannot be rebuilt. The history can't be put back. So I don't know. Are we only going to be happy when we've torn it all down and leveled the entire Liberty District? I say we should save this building. I say that the planning department should compel the owner to stabilize the remainder of the building. I say that the planning department should compel the owner to stabilize the remainder of the building. Other cities have had the vision and the creativity to take a space like this and turn it into a passive park. It could be a part of whatever development comes. So, I would ask you, please, to compel the city, if instead of taking the funds, my tax dollars, by the way, to tear it down, stabilize it, make it secure, so that no one can get hurt inside that building. But don't just turn it to rubble.
Thank you, ma'am. Is the, is the owner here? Yes, yes, sir. Well, that's okay, it's, it's first reading, you can come speak.
Mr. Chancellor, give them your name, please, sir.
My name is Chance Chancellor. I live at seven thirty-two Broadway in the historic district. And so, I would also like to speak in opposition to utilizing demolition by neglect on this building. As spoken earlier, this is a historic property, one of the few remaining historic pieces in the Liberty District. If you drive through the Liberty District today, you'll see most of it has been either demoed and turned into a modern housing, or it's just empty space. We know from what is City Manager's Agenda Number Six on the acquisition of Snyder's Land, that there are major, major plans for the Liberty District. You have all this space that is ripe for redevelopment. Why does this space have to come down? There are so many empty lots and so many empty spaces. This should not be the target for demolition by neglect. This piece of property was acquired five years ago for two hundred thousand dollars. This is not some long-lost piece of property that just got overlooked. Someone purchased this and has sat on it and allowed the top to fall in. And so, that is, it shouldn't be demoed just because someone basically bought it and decided not to do anything with it. So, this really comes into the bigger issue with the use of, utilization of demolition by neglect for historic properties that are in the historic district or designated historic by other means. This is an important tool, but it is a very, very heavy-handed and final tool that is used when the condition of property has truly deteriorated. When this tool is applied to historic properties, it is done without oversight of BHAR. And that committee is tasked with the preservation of historic properties. This sets up conflict of interest, which is the owner's best interest to allow these historic properties to simply fall into disrepair and hope that the city will come along and demolish it and provide a great new piece of land, free and clear, with any oversight from any historic boards. So, if the owner of this property came before the board, Council today, and asked to demolish this property, BHAR would likely oppose. But however, because this is being presented by Council, to Council itself, this is bypassed. So, currently, BHAR is charged with monitoring neglected historic properties in section nine point three dot sixteen of the Municipal Code. Council should seek BHAR's recommendation on this and other historic properties prior to simply ordering demolition by neglect and implement BHAR's recommendation. You've delegated this power to BHAR for a reason. Let's let BHAR do its job. Let's see. So, rather than offering to simply demolish this property on behalf of the owner and bill them, which is doing them a favor, Council should seek alternative remedies such as fines, which I recognize would likely be in the form of a lien. This is LLC out of Fayetteville, Georgia, so that this property can be kept intact and allow for future restoration. With everything that's about to be happening in the Liberty and all the exciting changes, we need to keep the few places we've got. I mean, think of, you know, down Broadway, Iron Bank, you know, all these other historic properties that have been redeveloped for reuse and that are his, especially anchors, especially Liberty Theater. There's not much left in this property to anchor the Liberty District. We need every piece of property we can save. So, please don't add this property to the demolition list. Instead, allow BHAR to use the power you gave them, and to only use this drastic demolition tool when necessary, and not on historic properties. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else on this property? Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I, has BHAR been in contact with this owner? He, he seems to know who owns it. Have they been in contact with him?
I'm, I'm not on BHAR.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, not to our knowledge. He's, I've, we've only, my department has only had one conversation with the gentleman who owns it, which was last summer. We did, the City Manager and I went to the BHAR meeting, I believe it was in July last year, to update them and let them know that at some point, if the owner did not take action, we would be bringing this property before, before Council for their consideration.
And he didn't say, he didn't respond or anything?
No, the conversation we had was, you know, that he was gonna take some action, clean it up, get all the trees and the debris out, secure it as a first step in, in delaying a demolition process. And then, I haven't heard from him in nine months.
Can we turn this property over to BHR and let them pursue it with the owner?
Not to my knowledge, there's no mechanism for-
Well, I mean, not, I'm not saying turn it over like, but take it from the demolition list and allow BA, BHAR to do what they've been designed to do, to try and preserve this historic property?
Well, I know, the conversations we had with BHAR is that they, the board in general would not be in favor of a demolition. But as the ordinance, ordinance has charged me with bringing dilapidated properties like this in front of you to allow Council to make the determination whether or not to, to bring it down.
Anything else? Count, Mr. Hughley?
Mayor, as, as the director said, I accompanied him to BHAR last year sometime, just to try and get this moving, because, I mean, I, I drive that way every single day I come to work. I drive past it every single day that I travel home. And I've watched, I, I saw the roof collapsed, collapsed, and, and my concern has been, you know, kids going in there to play like kids do, like we did when we were kids. And I, I think I even asked the director to look to determine if the brick was stable, because last week I passed by there, and there was a film crew on the inside filming. You know? And, I mean, I don't know whether the bricks will, are stable or not, and I think you all looked at that. But, but we did go to BHAR, and, I mean, I've watched it for the last fifteen, seventeen years in, in such a terrible state. And, and of course, you know, I, I hear Fran and, and the concern of BHAR. You know, I don't mind leaving it on the list, but delaying demolition to determine, see if we can, you know, what other options we have, but I would leave it on the list. And, you know, I just don't know how many communities a property such as that could stay in for such a long time. And nothing happens. But, but Mayor, if, if we leave it on the list, we, we will not allow the immediate demolition. We will try and, and do what we can to try and save it.
Well, we've, just through the normal course of the process, we've got at least two more weeks to try to relocate, or communicate again with the owner, and see if there's any way to try to- Because, listen, the demolition process is not something that we jump to lightly. We, we go through the demolition process when we don't have any response or can't get any assistance. Our, our objective is to get the property revitalized if possible, or to get the owner to take action to take it down. Because we, we have to hear from individuals that, that, this, this doesn't apply here, but typically the demolition process is enacted, because we've got neighbors or people around there that are impacted by the way these properties look. And sometimes you'll have a whole neighborhood that is brought down by one property, and, and then it kind of becomes Council's obligation to try to determine whether or not they can make an improvement by subtraction. We can talk with this gentleman, talk with him again. We can see if there's any fines, or talk with the city attorney about any other leverage we can exercise to try and encourage him to do something with it. But at the end of the day, we have, we have an obligation to make sure that the public is safe, too, so.
And that's if we can get a response out of him. But I would suggest that you go ahead and do the first read and do the second read, and, but we will ask the demolition company not to do anything with it until we say it's time to move.
Okay, we've got several of the-
And, and so then we'll try and, we'll do everything we can to work towards saving it.
Right. And I, and I agree, and it's an historic property. If there's any way we can try to save it for that area, we ought to try to do it. Counselor Davis?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, you know, I'm kind of struggling to see where the BHAR fits into all this, because they, they are a appointed body from Council, and normally they review development and plans and give recommendations and things like that. I've never seen a BHAR, BHAR involved in demolition and things like that. I would think that the Historic Society would have more, more say-so there. But what would be, I mean, I'm looking at this, I mean, even if you preserve the building, you gotta have some kind of minimum safety standards, because you've got, you've got infestation of whether it's rodents or pests and things like that that are affecting the neighborhood. You've got, you've got the access to deviant-type activities and things like that. You've got to do something to stabilize this. What would be the minimal, minimum standards to get this property where it needs to be?
Really, the, the bare minimum would be, like you mentioned, cleaning up all the solid waste, the debris, cleaning up the trees and all that that have grown inside of it, and then getting an engineer and stabilizing the brick structure. Because I have concerns, I've been inside of it, seen some of the decay of the facade, and have concerns about the structure itself and-
And, and I would agree with you, it's open access, and if something falls down, it could easily fall on somebody's head. But I don't know if development is gonna take place in this building anytime soon, if it can be stabilized for the minimum standards, and, you know, it may, I, I, I don't know. I've seen sometimes you can camouflage some of these buildings until the development comes with artwork and things like that. I don't, I'm not saying that's the case here, but I do know this building needs to be secured, because there are life safety issues and other type of community issues that need to be dealt with whether you tear it down or not.
Anything else, sir?
No.
Counselor Barnes?
First of all, I kind of like the way this conversation's going. I'd like to ask the lady that talked about something that's not being utilized, ordinance, or something that's not being- could you touch on that, what you were speaking about? Something that, an ordinance or something that's, we're working in defense of something like that? And the reason I'm saying this here, I'm, I'm one hundred and fifty percent glad that we have adopted these monies for, to get rid of blight. But I know in Philadelphia, they, that, that they use something to kind of save some of the buildings that were. If there is something, you know, because after you tear it down, it's gone. I mean, it's gone. And so, what you opened up, something that I would like to know a little bit about, be a little educated to. If there's something that organization, maybe BHAR, whatever, where you identify individuals, this is not gonna be blanket for so many, but specific structures, historical-
This is from the current Municipal Code, and this has to do with historic properties. So, when BHAR, when something is brought to their attention that it's a derelict property, there's a failure to maintain a historic property. There are remedies in place, and I don't know why the city does not use them. I have no idea.
Well, this is, this is news to, to me.
Well, there, it's right there. It came from the code, printed it out.
So, I guess it begs the question, as to why, there's no communication, why this is not in the mix? Before, I'm all for getting rid of blight, one hundred and fifty percent, I think it's an exit-
And I totally agree.
We're moving in the right direction, but I think-
Let the counselor finish, please, Ms. Carpenter.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. But I think with something like this here, there's nothing stopping, and I agree with what you're saying, Mr. City Manager, let's just slow, slow the roll a little bit and pursue this here, because once it's torn down, the historical history of it is gone. And I know that, I, I think that we slow down just a little bit, just to pursue it, particularly if we have something on the books like this here. This is news to me. I don't know whether it's news to everybody else or not, but it's definitely news to me. I think that we're going in the right direction, Mr. City Manager, just slowing up. We can keep it on the, on the list, because now should be, someone should contact whoever's in the mix with this ordinance, along with BHAR, to check things out, make sure everything's according to oil. If it's, if it can legitimately go the route of this, something that we already have on the books. Now, if we didn't have this on the books, I could say, "Look," but we do. And I do understand things happen in life, things are overlooked, they have erasers on pens, people make mistakes, so. But if something like this here is already, has already been, and we have a structure that's going to be that is possibly historically significant, then I think that we need to just slow things up, keep it on the list, but let's start doing a little bit of homework and finding out the true significance of this building. And I'm all for what Counselor Davis is saying, I'm all for safety, and all this thing is very important, of course. I don't want it to, anyone to get injured. But I think, being that you, if you had you not brought this up, I was, I was in the amen corner saying, you know, "Let's tear it down," but once you tear down history, it's gone. And, and I think about the Promised King Bridge, and that's gone. That was torn, that's gone. That was a vital piece of history. You know, one of the biggest brick builders here in the area. And so, once it was gone, and I don't, and the city didn't know it, any historical significance, it's gone. And I think this may be, I'm not saying it is, but had you not brought this up, and we have it on the books, I think we need to do our due diligence to pursue it. And we're gonna keep it on the list, but it allows all the individuals, you to call, or to maybe, Mr. City Manager, or us, to get in contact with whoever it may be, to look into this here, and to see if it's legitimately, legitimately can be saved, or get some people in the mix. Of course, if not, err on the side of safety, but you are definitely alerting the individuals, as yourself and other individuals, who know the true significance of this here, to get involved and start shaking the leaves, and start having the individuals be involved in trying to do something to save this building.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Barnes. And I just want to clear something up. I'm not here representing BHAR tonight. I am on BHAR. I volunteer my time for BHAR. I'm here as a concerned citizen who li, who lives in the historic, in a historic district and owns property in the Liberty District. And so, that's why I'm here. I'm not here to represent BHAR tonight.
Well, appreciate you bringing it up. It started a good conversation and one that needs to be had, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, with the, Ms. Carpenter is correct about the ordinance on the books, and we can find people like this case and many other cases when we have out-of-town owners. My staff or myself have to physically touch the person and hand them the citation to get them to court to be able to impose those fines. The judge in Recorder's Court is the one that has to impose those fines. So, that is the challenge. And then if the defendant doesn't show up to court, all we can do is issue a warrant for their arrest, and we wait until they get picked up. So, that's the particular challenges we have with enforcing that particular ordinance.
We've got a few other counselors. Counselor Thomas?
As I understand it, Mr. City Manager, your recommendation is that we leave this. If we leave this on the list, and it goes to the second reading and remains on the list- If we leave this on the list and it goes to the second reading and remains on the list, what is the next step? Do we try to notify this owner and say, your property is on the list and it's going to be demolished? Or, Mr. Pruitt, one of you, what's next? I guess one of the things I'm trying to find, I'm trying to get in my mind is the timeline. Are we talking about a week? Are we talking about a month? Are we talking about six months? Are we talking about what between the second reading of this and the actual action with the owner?
Mayor-
And I won't hold you to that timeline. I'm just curious as to what's generally there.
And I must say, I don't know. My recommendation is that you keep it on the list and even on second reading. We will make every effort to try and work with the owner. We'll have a conversation with BHA, we'll do whatever we need to do, and the demolition company will know, don't do anything with this property unless we give you clearance, though it's been authorized by council. And, I mean, if we've got to go another six months, I mean, it's been through the process, we'll do what we need to do. You know, I don't have a desire to tear down historic structures, but we cannot have, you see that picture there? I mean, can you imagine little kids going in and going under all that rubble? Can you imagine someone collapsing? Can you imagine someone throwing a match under there and, just for fun? Kids? I mean, how long do we, do I have to drive past this every single day?
And one of the things I would suggest to you is that we can keep this on the list for both the second reading and the first reading. Ms. Carpenter knows that we, that there is a possibility that BHA might be able to do something, and perhaps she could get in touch with BHA and see if we move them on. And you know, Mr. City Manager and Mr. Pruitt, that it seems to be pretty much the consensus of council to let's put this on the list as low as we can so that if something can be done, it can be done. But if not, this is a detriment to the community, even if it is historical. It's got to be cleaned up one way or another.
Agree.
Okay. Counselor Garrett?
I've had the same issues, you know, in my district, because East Island and North Island has a lot of historic homes, beautiful homes that have been on the demo list, and in North Island in particular, I think True Springs would be willing to renovate some of them. But, for example, the building behind mine, I had to track down the owner in Miami behind my law office on Veterans and 12th. If y'all have driven by there, they're homeless people all inside the building behind where Morgan &amp; Morgan's office is, in that building that is attached to us. I've called the owner, actually got his contact information. He said he can't find anybody to do anything with it. And we've got to have a stronger condemnation power with this city where we can take these properties and allow them to be put up for public sale, because otherwise, people aren't going to buy them with these tax liens. And properties like this, if we were able to put it up for public auction, somebody would probably buy it. Now, would we get our money? Would we get our money back? Maybe not, but if they're going to use it for a historical purpose and keep it within the historical realm, I'd be okay with that. But there's got to be something to get for these out-of-town landlords, because I'm dealing with it personally. We joke, we joke about a boyfriend and a girlfriend that sleeps on one side of a building and one on the other side, and there's no telling how many people are in the building behind us because the windows are open, and I've made the owner aware, and he's not doing anything about it. You know I'm talking about, the one behind Morgan &amp; Morgan? And if we don't have condemnation power when it gets to this point so that we can preserve, because that building has good bones. I know multiple people who are interested in it, but nothing is happening, and the owner has neglected it, this is since I've been at Morgan &amp; Morgan, in 2018. And before that, my old law firm actually looked at buying it. And it is not getting better. And we've got to somehow increase our power because we can save these historic properties if we can get them out of these slum lords who do not live here, do not care about our community, and don't care about the historic value. They just thought they made some sort of investment, they might flip. And if we don't do that, either in some way conjunction with condemnation or giving it to the land bank where they can auction it off, we've got to find a way to do this. Because I agree, this is an eyesore. It's dangerous. But this owner has let it get this way, and they don't deserve to be able to keep the property. And, I mean, that's my opinion. But-
Thank you, sir. Counselor Crabbe? All right, Counselor Barnes?
I agree. I'm all for safety and everything. If the lady there had not brought up something that we have on the book, and I don't think I'm the only counselor up here that didn't know that this is existing, but something like this is good. I'd like to have more information on that piece. And I agree with what you're saying, just keep it on for a little bit so that I know that the city's going to contact BHA. I forget what your name is.
Rain Carpenter.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. You will also get in the mix because of your volunteerism and wanting to preserve historical buildings. I hear what Counselor Garrett is saying. So I just think, I really think this is part of us preserving history. Once it's torn down, it's over. It's gone. And this is not, you're doing an excellent job. I'm glad that the mayor and the city manager has this program for blight. This is blight here, so we're on the right path. But I think there's exceptions to every rule stringent this, and I think this is one thing that we may not regret slowing down. And I'm just saying, slow the process down enough for the lady and others interested in this building here can bring to us and say it is very historical and do whatever our due diligence to save it. But if no one steps up to the plate, ma'am, if there's not that many people involved, it's a safety hazard. Err on the side of safety for the citizens, it's got to come down. That's the only thing I'm saying.
Yeah. Well, Mayor, we will certainly do that. And again, we would do everything we can, you know, but I've got, when we come back to you, if it's Christmas time, you're still going to see this here in December. Because, you know, when it's historic property, I think people know that, you know, you've got to go through an act of Congress, and, you know, they don't have a sense of urgency, and that's what we're dealing with. But we're going to do everything we can.
Okay. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, Mr. City Manager, you know I'm pretty conservative when it comes to spending taxpayer dollars. But on this matter, maybe you just, you know, I'm looking at it, you might want to consult with a structural engineer and just get them to take a look at it. And they'll tell you if, did we consult with a structural engineer?
No, we didn't bring in a structural engineer. It was just, as the building official might review and cracking-
I mean, that's your best professional source to find out if that building's salvageable. It really is. And if they come in and tell you it's dangerous, then it's a whole new-
Well, and we'll do that, because I did ask-
It becomes a whole different issue.
And then we should post something.
Yeah, I did ask them some time ago, it's probably been six months, to look at the structure, because I'm concerned about the structure. I'm concerned about kids being inside that building, and with that wood and that thing collapses. And who will the public look at and scrutinize?
Then we can post something about the children from the city of Columbus.
That's all I'm saying.
Mr. City Manager, you know I'm all for, I mean, I'm all for saving historic structures, but you know, I've talked to you many times about buildings down there, things that are happening, going on, and, you know, and you heard that and took care of it. And whatever happens, if this building stays there, it needs to be secured, it needs to be stabilized and cleaned up and put in a position that nobody can get hurt or no type of deviant activities are happening in this area. It just needs to be secured and cleaned up.
All right. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Pruitt, it's my understanding that you have the authority under our rules and regs to board this property up and then charge the owner for the material and the labor and so forth. I would request, I'm not making the motion that you do this, but request that you take a look at this and see what your recommendation would be in boarding it up. And if you could do that before you bring it back on the first reading, just to give us an idea of, is that a possibility? Is that something that we can do to help keep the kids out and so forth? If you could bring that back to us when you come back for first reading, I think that might be helpful, too. Thank you.
All right. I think we're ready to move on. Yes, sir. Sure.
Just, my observations, looking at the budget, $36,000 was allocated to tear this building down. The property was purchased for $200,000. $36,000 would go a long way towards stabilizing this building and shoring it up.
Thank you.
All right. What's the next one on my list? There we go. 27 Munson Drive, Alpes Kumar Patel. Anybody here? All right. 3822 Third Avenue, Lang Realty LLC. Got somebody here. Give me your name and address, please, sir.
Hi, I'm Justin Lang. I live at 230 Lake Rebel Drive in Forts, Georgia. I was born and raised in Columbus, graduated Columbus High School in 1992. First house here in 2000. Currently own and manage a real estate firm, as qualifying broker since 2005. I'm here today to defend the property at 3822 Third Avenue, which I owned and acquired in 2014 in the beautiful North Highland subdivision. I'm committed to preserving the property, and I just wanted to be present here today as the owner. We have a lot of absentee owners, and I'm not one of them. I'm of limited bandwidth and financial capacity to just immediately click my heels together to renovate this thing and get it up to speed. But I did, in response to the letter that I got to appear today, clean up the property quite a bit, just to make a reasonable show I have good intentions and to do my part. My timetable is not necessarily the timetable of the cities to get it renovated, but I have made progress on the liens on that property that started at $110,000 in 2014 and now stand at approximately $20,000. Once those are paid for, I'll have some resources that I can devote to it. Long story short, I would like to ask the city to allow me to work directly with code enforcement rather than having to reappear before the council. I know that's a little bit of a steep request, but the last interaction I had with code enforcement was in March of 2020, in the height of COVID. I had contracted to a gentleman to do repairs on it. He took down the boards that were on the windows that had stood there for the length of time that I owned the property and even longer than that. We subsequently put the boards back up, and I was told that as long as that remained the condition, that there would be no more, you know, enforcement interaction. And until I got the letter, I just was, I was kind of blindsided to some degree in appearing here today. So if I could work with, directly with Mr. Pruitt, I would appreciate that. I did speak with him this morning, and he gave me some encouragement that they would be willing to work with me, and I intend to do that. I did also list the property for sale on MLS locally, and I would like to request 90 days to get the property sold to a qualifying investor if I can't be given the timetable that I personally need. And lastly, that's a sort of a material fact, is that there are three other properties that are immediately neighbor mine. This is my property. The property immediately to my left, and the two properties across the street. I'm so sorry. Told you I could talk loud, and I'm not doing it. This property here is my house, and three of my immediate neighbor's houses are burnt severely. And I've already had conversations with potential investors, and there's a real threat of arson risk immediately there. And I don't know what the city's timetable for taking care of some of that blight is, but if I could have your assistance and guidance on what your timetable is, it could help me decide what mine needs to be. Let me show you a couple of pictures. So this is my immediate neighbor to the left. This fire happened on the 3rd of March, subsequent to me getting this letter, or actually five days prior to me getting this letter, subsequent to the day that it was sent out. So this is something that maybe code enforcement isn't even aware of, and the damage to that house is extensive. I don't think it can be restored in any reasonable fashion. And it's fair to say that with the owners there, they may have plans, I'm not sure because it's so recent. This is a property that's directly across the street. Talk about an unsafe structure, there's one for you. And then another one that's already- My apologies. So this one is, is that on? Hello? Anyway. Anyway, the- Okay. So anyway, it's immediately across the street, and- Try this again. Ah, that's much better. Anyway, this property is very severely burned, dilapidated across the street. That fire happened in January of 2021, a year, you know, a little over a year ago. And this property was also burnt two years ago in December of 2020. So those are just legitimate concerns that I have. They obviously affect the marketability of the property, and I just want your help in getting guidance moving forward.
Okay. Counselor Crabbe?
Justin, have you disclosed that the city of Columbus has notified you about your property that you said you listed on the MLS?
Yes, ma'am. It's right here in the general public remarks.
Okay. That was the only question I had.
All right. Any other questions from council?
All right.
There doesn't appear to be any.
No motion on that, then. We've heard the request.
But I guess, since it's on first reading, you will have time to interact with our director. So you might be able to get some kind of administrative leeway that will help you. Because again, the objective of council is try to get these things restored. And if it's quicker to get you to restore it-
My realistic timetable's in the next two years. I mean, just being honest with you. That'd mean I can't make progress if I'm forced to, and I'll look at the city spending the money to tear it down, which I don't think we should do. But that would be my ideal timetable. And frankly, with the other burned houses, I really would like some input or at least some direction on where to go to get that input, to communicate directly with the city on what are we going to do with those.
And they may already be on our radar, I would imagine.
Okay.
Yeah, I wrote down all the addresses. I'm fairly confident that they are, but I could confirm that.
Is it fair to ask that those properties be demoed before mine?
I think a lot of that depends on what you're able to work out with Mr. Pruitt, because technically, once that process starts, process continues, these are in some stage of that same process. So it'll follow the same road that yours will. But that's why I say, I mean, if Mr. Pruitt makes a determination that you're making some plans and can show him what you're going to do and when you're going to do it, you know, he may come back with a different recommendation. Oh, Counselor Crabbe?
Could you please go over the process, the timeline that you go through for these properties for Mr. Lang?
Yes, so when we first start a demolition case, I can back up, I have a slide. So when we get notified or get a complaint or our officers on their own find a dilapidated property that meets the criteria for demolition, which that criteria is that it's going to cost more than fifty percent of the property's value to fix up the property. That's what qualifies a property for the demolition list. The first step is to notify the owner and schedule a demolition hearing. So we're required by ordinance to send certified mail. If the mail comes back, it's not delivered, we have to search for the responsible party, search for the owners, be able to get that certified mail delivered to prove that they have received the notice. Then we hold the hearing. The hearing's held by me and my staff at that hearing. The owner has an opportunity to let us know their plans, show cause why the property shouldn't be demolished, really just have kind of the similar conversation that we're doing with this, this particular property. That hearing was held back in the early part of twenty twenty. Then the owner is given another notice, which either we hand-deliver it to them at the hearing or again, we have to send certified mail if they don't come to the hearing. That's a forty-five day notice, which basically puts the requirement on the owner to start repairs within forty-five days. And then if they fail to do that, the next step is to send another notice. Again, same process, making sure it gets received, notifying them of the council hearings so they have an opportunity to come before you. Then once the council hearings are happening, first and second reading gets approved, then the demolition contractor can get going. So that process normally takes over a year between scheduling the hearings, getting before council, as well as making sure all parties are properly notified.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pruitt.
Comment, we're talking about fifty percent of value. In my honest, experienced opinion, this is a hundred thousand dollar property. It's going to, it's a duplex. It's one bedroom, one bath on either side. It's going to take fifty thousand dollars to fix it up, frankly, but it's a hundred thousand dollar property based upon gross rent multiplier of a hundred. So and with rent going up, I don't think it's going to be a problem to get five hundred aside once it's done. So it, it's a viable project. It's not just something I'm here to ask you, please don't knock it down, because I won't forever. I'm going to renovate it, but just need some more time.
Well, and it'll, it'll, it'll stay on for second reading in two weeks. And, but that gives you some time, I think, like I said, to talk to Mr. Pruitt and see if there's something you can work out. All right?
Will do, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lang.
All right. Next slide. Got fifteen oh-two Virginia Street, Ed Walwinder, junior, junior owner. Not sure if that's in an estate or not. We'll need to check on that, Mr. Pruitt. Next one, twenty-six hundred fourteenth Avenue, Dennis Deal. Anybody present? One sixty-seven Munson Drive, Geraldine Toler Owens. Thirty-two thirty-two Urban Avenue, Isabel Spence, owner. Next. Twenty-three fifteen Hamilton Avenue, Doug Mann, owner. Don't see any hands. And nine oh-nine Charleston Avenue, Josephine Banks Life Estate. Anybody present? Okay, that's all those on the list. And did you have one more short?
Yes.
Update you wanted to give council?
Yeah, I just had a couple of slides to update where we are at overall with our demolition list and the progress we've made over the, the last several years. So this is a look back over the last three or four years. And you can read on the slide, in twenty nineteen, the city itself demolished twenty properties. Two of those were, were large trailer parks, one on Old Casita and one on Far Road. In twenty twenty, again, it was another twenty properties. Twenty twenty-one, it went up to twenty-three properties. And so far to date this year, the city's contractors taken down five properties to date. And you can also see the numbers that the private property owners have taken care of. One thing that I've noticed in my, my two years is we do get an increased response rate from property owners now that we've made the commitment and are really pushing these demolitions through. The owners are more responsive, they're taking our letters more seriously and taking care of the properties on their own. Now here's a slide summarizing the funds that have been expended the last four fiscal years. So FY twenty-two number does not include the two hundred plus thousand dollars that's in front of you tonight. But you can see the total's over one point eight million dollars. And in this graph, I think, is, is a good representation. So the, the blue bars, those are the number of cases that we opened each, this is calendar years here. The blue bar is the number of cases we opened each year. So you can see in twenty twenty-one, we opened fifty-one new demolition cases. That means we found fifty-one dilapidated properties that we opened cases and started proceedings on. The red, or the orange is the number of cases we closed each year that were either demolished by the city, repaired or demolished by the property owner. And then the gray bar is a total cumulative number of the total number of open cases. So you go back to twenty eighteen, our demolition list was up to almost a hundred and fifty properties long. Due to all the money and the effort that's been spent, we've brought that bound, down to ninety as of December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. And you can see we're making progress every year and plan on continuing to do that. So basically, the ninety represents the cases that have been opened in the last two years. So we're out of cases that date back to twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. We're strictly pretty much dealing with twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one cases from here on out. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Good job, Ryan. Doesn't appear to be any up. There is one, Counselor Davis.
I'm going to take this moment to, to help Counselor Woodson out a little bit, but she's talked about it. I've talked about it before. There's a property in her district that it just seems like nothing ever happens. It's a retail strip center across from, you know, where the flea market is. I think it's Bull Creek right there, going down Victory Drive on the other side. It just, it, it, could somebody go out there and take a look at that? I know Counselor Woodson can confirm it, but that's been on my mind for a long time. I do a lot of business on the south end of town. My mother-in-law lives over there. I give my hair cut. I do a lot of things over there on the south end of town and I see it all the time and it just, it, you know, it's not being addressed. Could somebody take a look at that?
Yes, sir.
And if you need an address, I'll try to get one for you.
Yeah, I can get with.
All right, thank you. We'll bring the demolition ordinance itself back in April, the second Tuesday.
Counselor Huff?
Yeah, I need one, give him one before he leaves, if you don't mind, excuse me. On Amherst Street, Brown Avenue and Amherst Street, on the north side of the street, there's serious squatting going on. We've had the police to go out and some other people and I just got a text message asking, please, please, please. They are starting to start fires over in there to stay warm and they're using it to cook on and everything. But the resident lives on the south side there on the corner, but on the corner, you, you can't miss it. On the corner of Brown Avenue and Amherst Street, on, on the north side of the street.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, again, we'll bring the demolition ordinance back the second Tuesday in April. The last item we have on the business agenda, mayor, is a first reading to extend the business occupation tax deadline for the year twenty-two to June one, twenty twenty-two, from April one. Mayor Protem, did you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I think we've all heard from some CPAs that doing business, we extended this, made this extension last year and I think it's appropriate to, to do it this year to help all of them out this time, so.
This is just first reading. We'll bring this back next week, though it does need to be passed. We'll bring it back on the consent agenda or it needs to be passed before April one.
All right. Okay.
Mayor, we do need an executive session to discuss litigation and personnel matter and that's all we had listed tonight.
All right. Thank you. All right, we'll move to the public agenda. Please remember, you'll have five minutes. We ask you to start by giving your name and, and your address and we won't start the timer until after you've done that. And then unfortunately, five minutes is all you can have on, on, on this particular item, but we can, if you have more you need to say, you're welcome to stick around until after the clerk's agenda and we'll give you an additional three, three minutes. Okay, first is Mr. Ladarius Colbert regarding a social complaint and bring forth an issue of occurrence within the Muskogee County Criminal Court system. I don't see Mr. Colbert. Ms. Jessica Palmer regarding citizen safety. All right, Ms. Palmer is not here. Mr. Paul Olson regarding the mayor's biography, city purchase of Senovis Building and double roundabout intersection of Lynch Road and Highway eighty. Mr. Olson, hang on just a second, let me pull this up.
If you would, please put up the mayor's biography on the screen.
We're not going to put my bio up there. It's on the website, Mr. Olson, if you want to reference it, you're welcome to.
I signed a form and they agreed that they'd put it up there. Anyway, my name is Paul Olson, I live at one-three-eight-three-zero Uptory Lane. And if they would have put it up there, it's on the city's website, it shows Mayor Henderson's biography where he attended Columbus State and also Columbus College. And I put in an open.
It was Columbus College and University of Georgia.
Okay, you interrupted. Anyway, Columbus College, anyway, I put in an open records request and it stated that he did not obtain a degree. And you say, well, what's the big deal about that? Well, years earlier, a friend of mine, and his name is Randy Lunsford, he's vice president of, senior vice president of CBNT and Senovis, hired Mayor Henderson with just a high school diploma. And who would, the largest bank in the city of Columbus, CBNT and Senovis, would hire somebody with just a high school diploma unless he was a city councillor? He was the same person who fired you, Mayor Henderson, and he told me that, okay? So therefore, he also worked in the same building that we purchased for twenty-five million. The real problem is that the tax assessor has it at twenty-three million. It's two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand square feet, a hundred dollars a square foot, twenty-two point five million, rounded to twenty-three million. Why did we not have Mayor, a buyer's agent? Charmaine, she's left, you know, I have a real estate license, you have a real estate license. Especially when it comes to a commercial piece of property, you need to have him to protect all interests. In the disclosures, there's hazmat for hazardous materials and also for lead-based paint, plus any other defects and deficiencies. And it's like going into a courtroom and as an attorney walker, you would never advise somebody that's looking at the death penalty to not have an attorney to represent them. By not having a buyer's agent to represent them, then in essence, basically, we're, we have no protection at all. And the thing is, is that no one in their right mind would spend twenty-five million to buy a property and then spend another twenty-five million dollars for renovation and repairs. And the real problem is in the contract, in the closing statement, and this is what the attorney said, said, this is from the seller to the purchaser and we're the purchaser. Purchasers recognize and acknowledge that the closing attorney has not been requested to and has not undertaken any investigation of the condition of the property, of any environmental matters. They're basically telling even the closing attorney, keep your hands off this. I mean, this is a blatant conflict of interest because you did not disclose, Mayor Henderson, that you were basically, had ties in your bio with CBNT and Senovis and here we are purchasing it and therefore I'm going to file a complaint to the Georgia Real Estate Commission in regards to that and also I'm going to do it with the state attorneys general. And the reason being is that we're totally blindsided in the fact that in this twenty-five million dollars in renovation, we do not know in line itemization and work orders what you are repairing. And in essence, if we would have had a buyer's agent, he would have been able to disclose that and find out. And so therefore, instead of paying the twenty-three million, and if it's ten million dollars in repairs out of that twenty-five million dollars in renovation, we could have bought it for thirteen million. And the real joke is going to be on us, the taxpayers, because CBNT and Senovis, well, Senovis now, is going to, their intention is to move to Atlanta. And, you know, Mayor Henderson knows that. I mean, it's even been put in the newspaper that they have intentions, you know, they're one of the largest banks that's not located in a major city. So therefore, I just want to give you that warning order. So lastly, I want to talk about the, the roundabouts. I don't know if anybody knows, but there's a roundabout going to be there at Chasworth, not Chasworth, but Lynch Road and Macon Road, Macon Highway, Highway eighty. And the thing is, is that there's going to be another one where that Chevron gas station is. So it's going to be like a double roundabout within three hundred yards. And Mayor Henderson and I have discussed it before and I said, yeah, it's fine and dandy if you have something like that, you know, on a secondary road, but not on a main thoroughfare, because you're going to have to push all that traffic from a four lane down to a two lane on Chasworth Road where when it, it goes across a railroad track that sometimes stops traffic for twenty to thirty minutes, then they have to access and get back on Macon Road going westbound, eastbound. So I just want to let you know that, you know, that's what's coming out that way and possibly another roundabout there at Chick-fil-A. You have a great night and God bless you.
Thank you. We'll correct a couple of, Mr. Hughley.
Ms. Mayor.
You're done, Ms. Olson. Ms. Olson, you're finished, sir.
If you're going to retort that, I have the right to.
No, you don't get any more time. You can have a seat. We can get the bailiff to help you show you.
Ms. Mayor, I'm going to have Deputy City Manager Hodge to just pull up a, a document related to the purchase, acquisition of the Senovis property. And of course, you know, we've, we've presented that here in public. Very aware of, of the acquisition. It's been reported by the media, but it's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet that we were able to actually get for twenty-four point five million dollars.
Plus a six-hundred space garage.
Plus a six-hundred-and-thirty-four space garage and we're going to show you the property and the furniture.
And the furniture.
And so I know that, you know, most real estate agents would know that that's a pretty good deal. And, and when you look at the quality inside the building, the marble floors and walls and so forth, you know that you're getting something extra special. And so would, would you just share, so, because it is important that when people provide erroneous information, bad information, that we set the record straight as quickly as possible. And that is what the people got tonight and we need to set the record straight.
Absolutely. This was a presentation that was done back in September of twenty twenty-one related to the property acquisition of the Senovis buildings. And I will say, just to add to that, we did extensive review of that building with our architects, with our construction manager. They brought in specialists for plumbing, electrical, HVAC, evaluated all the systems in the building thoroughly multiple times. And we do have an, an itemization of everything that will be done as part of the renovation. They evaluated all the systems. Anything that had a useful life less than ten years will be replaced as part of this renovation so that we do have a building that's sustainable for many years into the future. We looked at the roof. So everything about the buildings was evaluated by our architect and construction management team along with Ryan Pruitt, our inspection and codes director, and all the consultants that came with them. So I will go through this just briefly, talking about the process, the acquisition process. It's three point five acres, as the city manager stated, almost two-hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet and a six-hundred-and-thirty-four space parking structure. There is multiple buildings that are interconnected within those buildings located on Broadway and First Avenue. And you can see outlined in red all of the buildings that are. And you can see outlined in red all of the buildings that are associated with that acquisition. These are the different buildings that we acquired, the Jordan Building, Bradley Building, the main office, the Uptown Center, and then the parking facility. Picture of the main office, which sits on the corner of Broadway, the Bradley Building, right next to the main office building, the Jordan Building further down Broadway, the Uptown Center, which is off the First Avenue side, and then the parking facility. So that acquisition was a purchase price of 25 million. There was a credit for a lease agreement, as Sanovis is remaining in those buildings based on the lease agreement that we have with them for 500,000 dollars. So our net purchase price was 24.5. And again, we issued, Columbus Building Authority issued bonds, which council has authorized, those have been issued, and we got a really great rate on those bonds because of the bond rating that we do have in the city of Columbus.
Thank you.
And Ms. Mayor, you know, we had architects, obviously, heavily involved. And let me just say that we have an architect, an architect team of local architects as well as.
SLAM Collaborative out of Orlando.
From Orlando. So we're not just, you know, out of town, and local architects are partnered. And they looked at, we looked at a number of different buildings throughout this community. And of all of the buildings and properties we looked at, you know, this property was the number one without question. And we've done all the due diligence, as the deputy city manager indicated. We've inspected every system. Not only, as she said, the architects were there, the construction manager was there, Ryan Pruitt, who's ICC certified, was there. We had public works employees who would work on systems, do the building, you toured the building, I toured the building, both deputy city managers toured the building. We did everything. And so for someone to just come forward and make such statements is just careless, you know? And so we just needed to set the record straight.
Well, and I think there's a couple of other little things, too, that are, I want to point out. Sanovis isn't leaving. In fact, Sanovis just announced that they're consolidating their headquarters right there in a brand-new riverfront place. And on top of that, I think the staff did a very wise thing and actually used a mix of taxable and non-taxable bonds so that it would leave us the option of returning some of that storefront back to retail or restaurant or whatever. And we're also gonna be consolidating a lot of our other buildings, being able to put them back on the tax rolls. So it's just, I mean, it was, and it's gonna be a net neutral in cost to the taxpayers. It was probably as good a transaction for the taxpayers as could possibly happen.
And Mayor, I believe that interest rate on the bonds was like 1.62%. Go ahead and finance any piece of property at 1.62%.
Means we have a pretty good rating, I would imagine.
And so we just need to set the record straight, and I appreciate the time.
Yep, thank you. Counselor Davis?
Well, while we're on the subject, I mean, just to expand on what you two gentlemen were just talking about, if you really subtract the parking deck out of it, you got a parking deck that's worth 20, 25 million, easy. I mean, in current dollar terms, you know, and when you, when you look at it from that way, it's a significant deal having that parking deck there. But I just got an email, and I'm gonna take this opportunity while you all are discussing the topic, from a gentleman that he actually just asked about pressure washing the parking deck. Now, when you look at the photo that you just showed up there, it looks very, very clean. And quite frankly, I can't tell you right now if it's been done or not, but can we make sure that the facade of the parking deck is pressure washed and cleaned up? Because it would, it would be a big improvement.
Sure.
For that area and really bring a little vibrancy to that area. It's a lot of acid rain on it last time I saw it, I'm not sure now.
So you're talking about the 634-space parking deck that came with the 25 million dollars?
Yeah, and if anybody knows construction, what it costs per parking space today, I mean, that's a, that's a lot of money to have a parking deck.
And the 634 parking deck came with all those other buildings that we closed on two weeks ago.
I know.
So we, but we will pressure wash it because we own it.
Thank you. The gentleman just in that email is gonna be doing the dance tonight.
All right. All right, next, we've got Mr. Jerome Lawson representing Twist Skillet LLC regarding the ARP funding eligibility need for clarity. Welcome. Yeah. Let me get him a mic, please. All right, if you would, just, for the record, states your name and your address.
My name is Jerome Lawson, 2922 Howard Avenue. My name is Jerome Lawson, 2922 Howard Avenue. I am the owner of Twist Skillet LLC food truck. I'm here today to talk about ARP program, issues, confusion, and unaccountability. Now, I submitted my paperwork for the ARP grant, and I was denied because my business wasn't in existence before 2019. That was, that was the criteria for denying my ARP grant. Now, I'm gonna prove to you all that I was in business within the eligibility timeframe stated in the application for the ARP grant. That's why I titled it "Confusion and Unaccountability." The issues from that. The first things that I want to say is that the dates have no clarity. Let me kind of push this over. The dates have no clarity. Eligibility, program overview. It says that in order to get this grant, you must have been open since, now, since March the 1st, 2019. Since means from that date specified going forward. Could we all agree on that? That's what, that's what it says, so that's what it means. And you're able to be reimbursed up to 40,000 dollars. This is the eligibility printed out in ARP program, okay, overview. And it's for rent or mortgage, utility, and/or operational retrofitting. So any upgrades, anything you did to your business during COVID to accommodate the COVID impact, you're supposed to be reimbursed for that, according to the ARP eligibility. This right here highlighted yellow, it says, "To be considered for the ARP Business Grant Program, a business must meet all eligibility listed below." Okay, I just want to point this out because some reason, some people didn't get it. All right. Right here, it says, "For profits businesses who can demonstrate ongoing business operations since March 1st, 2019." Right, y'all see that? That's not my writing, that's in ARP grant package. Copy of current City of Columbus business license. Sold proprietor certification, 2020 Schedule C. If you got to have a 2020 Schedule C, why is it saying March 1st, 2019? I had the same response. If no 2020 Schedule C is available, provide 2019. So if you can't provide 2020, they're saying you can provide 2019. Profit and loss statements, 2020 corporation income tax return. And it tells you for partnerships, reimbursable expenses. Let me just let y'all see the rest. Operational retrofitting costs. I just want to point out the red real fast. And these are the emails of the correspondents that I emailed with staff from the ARP board. Because after they denied me, I sent them an email asking to explain their denial, saying that I wasn't open before 2019, when the eligibility specifically said March 1st, 2019, since that date. Not before, but since. And somehow, we're trying to make before and since mean the same thing, apparently. Now, it says, "Thank you for applying for the City of Columbus ARP Small Business Grant." This came from the ARP Columbus Chamber dot com. This is the email. "After careful review of your application, it has been determined that the application is ineligible for further consideration. The application was denied because your business must have been established before March 1st, 2019." That's a lie. Right on the application. My business must have been established before, but the eligibility, as I clearly showed you, said since March the 1st, 2019. So the reason why I'm here today is because the dates have no clarity, which makes it misleading. Since March the 1st, 2019 and before March the 1st, 2019 are two different meanings. Funding reimburses only from June 2020. They're only funding you from June 2020 going forward. So what relevancy does March the 1st, 2019 have? Within the eligibility, why does it state that if you can't upload your 2020 business license, then use your 20, 2019, then use your 2020 business license?
Mr. Lawson, I think your time's up.
All right, that's fine.
I apologize, but if you want to stick around, you can come back for three more minutes.
No, 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 I think I'll stick around, but I think I made point. I'm just trying to get some clarity.
And we may be able to get you some of that. Mr. Scott, you want to reply to that?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for having us here today, Mr. Lawson. Thank you so much for bringing this issue to this body. In response to ongoing business operations since March 1st, 2019, what that means is that a business would have had to have been established prior to March 1st, 2019. When Mr. Lawson applied for the grant application, the business that he started was effectively started on March 18th of 2019 under the name of Twisted Skillet. He then had a name change in 2020, which then became Twist Skillet. The thing is, the program is designed to show that you were in business prior to March 1st, 2019. The business license that we were able to find does not show that. The business license shows that the business was established on March 18th. We have, this is 17 days past the date in which you should have had that license. And so what the body decided to do, and what I decided to do, is because I felt where Mr. Lawson was coming from, I asked for an exception, you know, in this particular case. An exception was not granted. However, the staff decided that if there was monies that were left over at the end in which everybody else who did meet the eligibility requirements, then that application would be considered. And that was the message that was conveyed during the course of the exchange in trying to give the clarity that Mr. Lawson was looking for.
Oh, we have a couple of questions. Mr. Counselor John House?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Scott, where did the dates come from? Was that a federal requirement with the ARP money?
Well, at the time that this grant, the grant process was developed, the ARP final rule hadn't come out. We were trying our best to get the product out to the community, so we followed interim regulation at the time. And so for us, it was as clear as that. And we followed the regulation that was in front of us at the time. But then the final rule came out later, you know, but we already had the product in the street. So it's hard to change a product once you have it deployed in a community as large as ours.
I understand that the interim rule then required that the business exist before the 1st of March, 2019?
Yes, yes. So it's either the interim rule or the CV rule, the CV, maybe you can help me there? Yeah, the CARES Act, yes.
CARES Act, okay.
Right, inhabitate. So we originally built it with the guidance that we had in front of us, which was the CARES Act guidance, and then the final rule came out, and then, but we already had our product in place.
Okay, and the since part came in because the expenses had to have occurred since?
No, the expenses had occurred during the period. The period in which the expenses should have been incurred was July 1st, 2020, through present. However, the requirement required that businesses have had to have been established prior to March 1st. March 1st was the cutoff for businesses to have been started to participate in this project.
Okay.
Counselor Hodge?
Director Hodge. Because I remember we spoke in the beginning. I know there were a lot of parameters set and sent down to that office and on out to everybody else. I met with Mr. Lawson Friday, because I've been eating there for years. And I was around during the time that he had some situational circumstances with his partner. So he's been in business a while. And he had to change to get the partner out for him to be a sole proprietor of his business, which had him to change licenses to give a different date. So as far as the director going by the dates, the dates are correct. But there should be some type of exception or something because he really was in business. He just had to change his license.
The only documents that we've received shows that he was in business after the date of March 1st. And we're trying to be, obviously, fair to every business that submitted. We have hundreds of applications, and so we want to make sure that we treat everyone the same, that the standards are the same for all of those who are making application. And that was the date that the committee decided that was put into the application was to be in business before March 1st of 2019 to show that a business was there prior to COVID and the pandemic, made it through all of what was going on with the pandemic to provide that assistance to small business. And I feel for him, I do, I feel for him. But we're going off of the documents that we were provided, and that's what we have to base the decision on.
Yep, but I'm saying, based on going, following the rules, I understand that. But how many cases did you have where they had been in business and had to reapply for a business license because they got rid of a partner?
Oh, I do not have that information, but I don't know that we have another instance like this one that I'm aware of.
That's what I'm saying, this is probably the only one. Because he's been in business, he just had to dissolve the partner to switch over by himself. And then, and then, and then the other piece I need, while you're trying to help me with this, is, I read it, and I'm still having a problem with the since and before. The since means since March 1st, before means before March 1st, so.
Well, it reads that you have to be in business since, you have to have been in business since March 1st. So if you weren't in business after March 1st, you hadn't been in business since March 1st. It was after that, so.
Yeah, that's, okay.
So I mean, I guess it's just kind of a play on words on what the interpretation was.
Yeah, I just wanted to get there to see what the interpretation is from your perspective.
Yeah.
Because, because if that's the case, then I still think this is the only situation that he truly was in business before that day. He dissolved the partner, got a new business. By the time they issued the new license, 17, 18 days had passed or whatever.
Yeah, and we don't have that documentation. All we have is the documentation of the March 18th date. And what we did, and what I know was conveyed to Mr. Lawson was, we're working through the process for all those that submitted applications. When the applications have been reviewed and all of them have been processed that meet all of the criteria, and if there's funding available, we'll come back and request changes to the application. But I just, we just don't feel that it's fair to not honor.
It's not fair going forward with everybody else if it was the same. But I'm saying, this is a little different to me. So I'm asking, what I'm asking is, is there any way to meet with him and see if documentation existed that you can visibly see?
Yeah, if there's documentation that he can submit that shows he was in business prior to that March 18th date, but at this point, he hasn't submitted that.
Jerome, you don't have to come to a mic, but they need to, you need to first see if counsel is gonna let you speak.
I'd like to request for him to speak, please, if you're on.
All right, his motion's second, all in favor? Any opposed?
You know, one thing I stand on is integrity. And everybody who know me know that. I talked to Mr. Robert, and he walked me through the process. And I asked him. And I asked him, did I need my two thousand nineteen business license? He said, no, use your twenty twenty. Am I lying?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. So if I was led by you through this process, then why stand before the council and make it look like I'm stupid? The be- the, the eligibility, I just picked this up on the table. It says since March first, two thousand nineteen. If you're going to be misleading and wait till the product is out there and say, no, we meant before, that is misleading the community. That is wrong. And if you drop the ball, that's okay, people make mistakes. But don't hold me accountable because you all didn't clarify something that you had the responsibility to clarify. And you're going to stand here before the public and say, oh, we meant before. If you meant before, why didn't you put it in the eligibility stipulations? And then you say we only reimbursing you from June twenty twenty. Then two thousand nineteen doesn't make a difference because you're not reimbursing business, businesses from that date. We need to have accountability from our leaders. And I ask that you all vote in my behalf because I've been an integrative business in Columbus, doing the right thing in my community. And I got to stand here and have people to treat me like this because they dropped the ball? He just said, we basically just put something together and put it out there because of the time restriction. COVID was heavy. But don't make me suffer because you just dropped the ball. It's okay, people make mistakes. We grow, we get better. But integrity won't allow me to sit here and make it seem like I didn't do what I was told to do. I appreciate the favor, but I don't really accept favors like that. I don't ask people for favors, I earn what I get. And I work hard. I filled out my wife's application, it says reimbursed up to forty thousand, she was owed eighteen thousand plus, they said, we're going to give you fifteen. That's not your money, that's the government's money that they stipulated for small businesses, people who work hard. Release the funds and do right by the community, that's why the community don't trust. Look at this situation. This isn't a thing that the community can say, oh, they did the right thing, because they didn't. And I sat there and I read it, I say, businesses, ongoing businesses since March first, two thousand nineteen, that doesn't indicate before. And if it did, they should have said so. They could have said so, but they didn't. Because we know that the funds don't get depleted, they go back to the city. But we need to incorporate this and the, and redistribute these funds to our people out here that are working hard. People out here that deserve a push and a boost. The brother sat there and told me what I needed to do, and I followed that, and now that it didn't work out, you should stand behind me. Forget a job, stand behind what's right. That's what it's about. I did everything the application said, and I had to switch business partners, I couldn't control that, but it says since March the first, so that means that starting at March the first, two thousand nineteen going forward, that's what since means. And we need to honor that. That's all I'm saying. And I ask that you all vote on my behalf and release the funds that I'm entitled to.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I may, um, I, I'd like to take a look at it. I, I haven't seen that, so I don't know, but-
Want me to give it?
Um, no, I can get it from staff. Um, let, let me take a look at what he is talking about and, um, um, who, who, are we revealing who was on the committee? Yeah.
Josh Beard initially, I spoke with Josh Beard.
Yeah, let me, let me just hear from them.
Our internal committee is made up of myself, Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin, Finance Director Angelica Alexander, IT Director Forrest Toley, and, um, HR Director Reether Hollowell on the ARP program.
Yeah.
On this particular program, Director Rob Scott was, um, brought in, um, as putting together the application process for small business tourism and, um-
So, so I was trying to see, what, what committee make the final decision on the award?
So the review process is done, um, with Startup Columbus. We went in, we had a, a MOU with Startup Columbus through the chamber. Uh, Josh Beard was their, um, contact person. He has since left the chamber, and Tiffany has, um, started reviewing the applications, but Rob Scott has been, um, answering their question and assisting them with the interpretation of the rules that, uh, we developed internally with staff.
Okay. And, okay, yeah, I, I'd like to take a look.
I think that sounds like a good place, because it sounds to me like it's pretty simple. If Mr. Lawson, you know, he, he says he has verification that the business was in effect on March first, and, uh, if he can show that verification, I think that should wrap it up.
I signed it in. Mr. Rob went and got, I actually got, let me, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I, I'm sorry, I don't have any more time.
That's all right.
I just, Mr. Rob went to the business office and got my business license. The transitioning period wound up making me get my business license on the eighteenth of March. But either way, March first was the starting date, that's the first that they were going back as far as validating businesses. So if it was March the first, or April, or May, it had, the deadline was according to this. Like if we went to court, this would be a reference case that would bust it open.
Well-
Because this is the-
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. City Manager.
I, I will get the, the nitty gritty details of all of that, and-
We'll, we'll look into it. City Manager.
Mr. City Manager, yeah, take a look at that, because he had-
I will.
Yeah, before then, leading up to that. So it's two sets of licenses.
I, I will.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Counselor Tucker.
Um, I did want to ask, I know that it was stated that he would be put on the list at the end, um, and if it was monies left over that we could possibly approve. Now, does his, um, food truck qualify as the tourism and hospitality? Because, you know, we are aware that not too many people have applied, um, for those dollars, and if he, your range isn't within that twenty-five thousand dollars and he qualifies, you know, maybe we can approve him under the hospitality and tourism. I think it was like two people that have been approved for that pot of money, and, um-
Yeah, and I, I don't know, and I don't know if they can answer the question, but I will, we will look at that.
Yeah, so that's, that's another option.
We'll, we'll take a look.
Okay.
And, and I can assure you, you know, um, we're going to do the right thing, uh, whatever it is, you know, uh, if it's, if he's right, we'll, we'll do it. If he's not right, we're not going to do it. And so we will do the right thing.
Got a few more. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, Mr. City Manager, thank you for, um, being willing to take a look at it. Um, I was going to ask if you would do that too, I think that's the right thing. Thank you. And, and let me just say, I'm not defending anybody, but a lot of, this is a very, very confusing act coming out of Washington. I'm just telling you, on the federal government side, okay? It's not the city side, not the state side. So a lot of these, I would suspect, a lot of these deadlines, and there, there were a lot of deadlines that, that people were confused on across the board, and I know this, people in business, I've even heard it from them, but it, it is what it is. It came out of Washington real fast, and they tried to get it out there, and God bless the ones trying to put it together. I mean, it, it was just, you know, a, a fast, rapid thing. Am I right on that? I mean, it was moving pretty fast from that standpoint. So they were responsible to try to do the best they can to do it, but a lot of that language that we're discussing, I think that's straight out of Washington, am I right?
Well, I, I-
I mean, these-
They know, I don't know, but I will know.
Deadlines, timelines, deadlines, I mean, that, those are the requirements. We didn't write those requirements, am I right?
Some of the requirements we put in place as part of the application, and some of them is specifically out of the ARP requirements.
Right. You had to hear to their, basically, you had to hear to their timelines within that. I mean, but you guys were trying to put all this together, and there were several different pots of money that came through over the course of time. So, you know, a lot of people got confused over that. But, um, I, I remember them talking about, you know, once the funds are depleted, you got to get it in, it's kind of like first, first in line, first come, first served, am I right? I remember hearing that, but there were funds, and y'all said in public, once the funds are gone, they're gone. But, uh, it sounded like in this conversation that I heard that there was a, you, you know, y'all were looking closely at this, and you, you went on through, and probably the funds were depleted, and, and we're kind of stuck in this situation, is that, is that-
We're still processing applications. We haven't depleted the amount that's been allocated by council yet, but we're still reviewing applications.
Okay. All right, well, I just want, I mean, I, I, I'm not defending anybody, but I just want you to know that a lot of this stuff is not city stuff, okay? Just trying to get it going.
Jerome.
You know, trying to put it in place, may it happen.
In regards, in regards to what he's saying, every time we go back in history, the people suffer.
Mr. Lawson, you, you really, your time's up, and really, unless they ask you a question, they-
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay, I get it, I, I, I get it. We're going to look into it, though, I will promise that.
I guess the, the point I was making is that, you know, there was a lot of, a, a lot of implication being applied, that the city was totally responsible and did all this, and that's not true. I think they, you know, I don't know how y'all could pull this stuff out with all the requirements and that. I mean, there, you know, there were a lot of phone conversations been going on between senators and congressmen and Washington representatives and even amongst the council, but to get it all put together and then serve the community, I mean, I wouldn't want to be doing that personally, because I know somebody's going to get missed out, I know, you know, some stones are going to be cast my way, and I wouldn't want that, but I just want people to know that this group was just charged to try to do the best they can to get it out, but it was, the program was set and put in place in Washington with everything, and we just tried to do the best we can. And Mayor, how many times have you talked to other mayors and, and the state level and on, trying to figure all this stuff out?
Quite a few.
I mean, Mr. City Manager, am I right?
Yeah.
So, um, I, you know, I, I, I congratulate those who've been trying to get this thing moving and get it out there, and hopefully we can, you know, work with this gentleman and sit down with him, and I thank you for that, Mr. City Manager.
Sure.
Thank you. Counselor Tucker.
Yes, and I know Rob, and I, I know, um, Director Rob and Deputy City Manager Pam Hodges, they really work hard on putting this out at a, you know, in a timely manner. Um, what I do know is that the CARES Act, you know, we, we base the ARP grant in reference to our application off, you know, the CARES Act with some ARP, um, requirements and stipulations. However, I just want to make it clear that the CARES Act requirements are completely different. That was state versus the ARP, which is federal. So when that interim final rule, they did not have these dates, you know, included, but we had to come up with something, and that's why we use the CARES Act, because we had already had that in place. However, ARP, the only stipulations is that the, um, issues that you face have to be, um, during the pandemic. So whatever business or nonprofit, whatever they submit as a need, you know, for reimbursement, it had to been at the time of the pandemic. It did not have a stipulation based on the time a business had to start, except for it had to have started during the pandemic. However, what we did was use the CARES Act because we wanted to help the citizens, you know, in a timely manner, and not wait till they, till the final rules to come out, which came out just this past January. So it's a lot of, this was a, I'm, I'm going to say like a moving train. Um, things changed continuously from the moment that the ARP, and we just hit a year. Uh, March eleventh was the, um, annual, the one-year anniversary of ARP. So we're in this, and on January was the final rule, so it was a lot of updates and changes, um, to the, the ARP, um, requirements. But I, you know, I hope that we'll be able to, to help, and I don't know if, you know, later on, we'll be able to amend the, um, requirements that will basically, um, look like what the ARP really was set for, and that was really for underserved, um, individuals, people that have faced great disparities, um, like our, our black and brown business owners. And that's why me and Counselor Woodson really went hard going out and reaching, you know, these business owners. So I just wanted to say that, because we keep saying ARP and CARES Act, I just want to let you know it's completely different, completely different requirements, completely different set of rules. Not, not the same at all.
All right, thank you. Thank y'all.
Well, and, and Mayor, before they leave, I, I just want to say, uh, or commend this team. I mean, Deputy City Manager Hodges named them, uh, but they have worked very hard, day and night, to pull together the CARES Act deal, uh, as Counselor Tucker said, was state. Uh, we laid out, uh, a plan for grants during, with CARES Act dollars for small business. We had a workshop at Trade Center and went through that process, and, and then when the ARP dollars came out, the same team worked very hard. And, um, in fact, uh, Rob Scott had some grant money in the CARES Act that was administered that they were able to receive, and then they took that application process and just carried it forward, uh, to become the ARP grant process. And, um, and, and, you know, it's, you know, I've heard, um, people talk about, um, how tough the application is, and, and I've said to them, you know, the ones who don't get discouraged by the documents you've got to submit, because it's federal money. We just can't hand out money without accountability, you know? And so that's why all those documents are required, but, um, but those who persevere and go through that process, then they will get the money, and those who, you know, don't will not. But Rob Scott put together the initial application process and this one, and, and you've done a heck of a job, and I appreciate that.
All right, we're on your agenda.
And Mayor, it is nine seventeen before I start my agenda, so I did not care of this meeting.
Well, I tell you, I promised the Cure Violence folks we should have through this real quick.
Yeah, so first on my agenda, subrecipient agreement, uh, Columbus Department of Public Health for Cure Violence. It's up to five hundred thousand dollars, it's ARP money, up to five hundred thousand dollars.
Motion approved from Counselor Tucker, and a second from Counselor House to the, to the motion, Counselor Crabbe.
Um, I know this was explained last, last, um, session, but why are we putting it under the public health instead of the crime prevention? Because we'll run out of AR, AARP funds, and then couldn't, if it were under the crime prevention.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Counselor Davis?
Yes, um, I, I just want to restate this again, and, and, uh, with this program, I mean, I'm going to support it, but, um, I did, the first time this came to us, I asked about how we're going to measure productivity. I asked that very clearly, and that is all high up on my watch list, and I do want to understand the return investment, and I think all the citizens do. So, uh, I'm willing to approve it, but I want to know, Mr. City Manager, how we're going to be able to track that?
Yes.
And understand it.
And, and when we signed the contract, uh, we are working to have metrics. Of course, we know this is something new, it's something we've not done before, and, you know, I've been going back and forth with staff on the metrics. Um, you know, having not done this before, do we use a metric of, we want to see crime reduced by the certain percentage? And, and we don't, this is something new for them, it's new for us, and we're trying to determine, you know, what's the right metrics? And, uh, you know, do we say we want to see crime significantly reduced, and then it becomes way too significant? So I've been going back and forth with the Finance Director on the metrics, and so we're still working on it, trying to figure it out, and I even said to the Finance Director when we were going back and forth, you know, if we look at New York, or if we look at Chicago, where they've had Cure Violence, you know, their metrics may not make sense for, I mean, we just can't say, well, they did this in Chicago or New York, so we want a similar- similar reduction in something in Columbus. So we're still working to try to figure out the exact metrics, but we are clear that we need some measurable goals, expectations, deliverables, and so we're still working for that.
Well, and, and that's good, but I, I really believe that we, we don't need to, we do not need to hear any type of a feel-good story, but we need to understand that we're making a difference in our community.
Absolutely.
That's an absolute, and I think that's the only way the citizens are gonna accept this in continuation.
Sure.
I'm willing to do anything that's gonna help and assist on the front end, but, uh, I'll say it again, I'm, I'm a big advocate of making sure that we do track, whether through a matrix or something, that there's got to be a measurement in place. We've got to show the citizens that we're making a difference.
Well, I couldn't, I concur.
Thank you.
You know, you don't just.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
You know, we don't.
And I, I wasn't here for the presentation. I think I told you, I've just been in the country for forty-eight hours, but, you know, welcome back, right?
Yeah, welcome back. But, but, but I get it, and, and I'm telling you, I think, I, and Angelica, I, I mean, I've been debating with them, so I, I get it. I expect the same thing. We just gotta figure out, you know, what is, you know, what is it? Because I, you know, I don't want to, we gotta try and get it right, because, I mean, I could say reduced by fifty percent, and that's totally unreasonable, and so we're gonna overpromise, you know, and, and underdeliver. But we don't want to say by ten percent and underpromise and overdeliver, we, just to feel good about it. So if you've got some ideas, share them, but I've been going back and forth.
Well, there.
But, but I want, but I want you to know that's important to us in this process.
There are statistics, and there's data that's been accumulated by the folks with Cure Violence that is shown in other areas, so I'm sure.
In other.
They'll be able to speak to that. Yeah. Counselor Tucker.
Oh, I was actually looking at the, I think this is the sub-contract, where it has a performance report, um, payment request schedule, and I, I noticed that it does say include identifiable, identifiable data metrics, but what I do like is, um, that you're given a summary of the overall community outreach and mobilization, and also the number of violence interruptions and detections handled by type, and then you provide, um, the number of participants served, to include the demographics as well. So it seemed like we're collecting, you know, a, some good data, um, that we can, and then it looks like I, I'm guessing that you're gonna come back and do a report, um, is that on an annual basis, or, uh?
So I may be able to help some with some of your concerns, Councilman Davis. So our system that we use to track what we're doing, absolute give-out reporting. Part of our process is always to have continuous reporting, analyzing what we're doing to ensure that we're moving in the right direction. It's not simply, we start on day one and we wait three hundred and sixty-five days before we have any interaction or changes. So this is always an ongoing process. We have a database that we, we put information in. That database does provide, provide reporting. It also goes to our global, uh, contacts to help us through any kind of issues that we may be seeing. So if we have some kind of special outlier that maybe hasn't been seen before, we're able to identify that very quickly and move forward. We're also working with data as far as from the hospital as well, that talks about each event and how, per event, what does that cost? Because one of the things we want to look at is not just the homicide piece of it, it's the violent piece of it as well, where we have people going into the hospital. You know, in a year time, we average about fifteen hundred violent events that go through the hospital, probably about three hundred and fifty of those are gunshot wound victims. And you can probably look on average about thirty-four thousand just talking about maybe the hospital piece per event, but on a national scale, you look at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, when you add all of the people involved and the resources involved in that process. So if we reduce that by ten percent or more, you can see the value of the money that's coming back, because you have to think about, a lot of these events, I mean, I, I hate to talk about it this way, but in some of those instances, those events are not being paid for. So once again, that is a tax on the city and the taxpayers. So we understand that, and that is one of the metrics that we're looking at, because we want to see the big picture of what does it cost per event? It's not some, it's, it's about the life part of it, don't get me wrong, but we have to think about, like you said, return on investment. You have to see where you're failing, but then also where you're also making improvements, and how can we reinvest the money saved to put in programs that can help? So, uh, we, we absolutely agree what you're asking for, and we want that. Uh, the reason why we're coming on the Health Department is because of that credibility, the reporting aspect behind that, as well as the Health Department already serves many of the people that we're talking with. So you look at about a hundred and twenty-five thousand in just in three oh nine oh three area, forty-two percent of those under the property level. So there's things that we're looking at that go along with this. It's not simply the violence fees, but it's what's causing the violence and where does it start? So we totally agree with what you're saying.
And I, I wanted to add that I do appreciate that we are using American Rescue Plan funds, which are grant dollars, and they are not coming out of old lost or any other city funding. So that is a plus for the citizens, um, and our taxpayers.
Absolutely. And, and so, Counselor Davis, you can see that, uh, he's talking and, on that side, but I, I mean, Angelica has been in my ear about it, you know, and, and, and I think we've gone, it, we've kind of argued a little bit about it, you know, the metrics and what we expect, going back and forth, so I want you to know, that's been a conversation for us.
And one of the things I can add to is that, you know, the people we'll be hiring will be from those communities. I mean, we're looking at, you know, salaries that will be well above livable wage, so in that instance, we're already making impact with just the ten we're trying to hire. So we're trying to make a difference immediately. You know, this is not about just throwing something against the wall. We want to do this right the first time, and we want to be good stewards of the funding that we're given. Um, it's very important for us to change what's going on in our communities. And what we're trying to do, you know, we also just got through talking with the Housing Authority as well, to get into those four housing projects. I mean, out of that is three hundred and seven kids, or kids in that fourteen to twenty-five year range that we, we're focused on. So we're very adamant about doing it right, getting it right the first time, not just spending the money, but making sure we do it right, so we can have return on investments, and we can reinvest that money in other programs that can assist in other areas.
Right, Mayor.
You're welcome. All right.
Well, I, I don't think there's been a vote or anything yet.
We, sir?
Do we vote?
No, not yet. We had a motion approved from Counselor Borne, from, yeah. All right, uh, can we post that, Bruce, and let them cast their votes? Okay? It's approved.
Thank you, sir. And we'll be.
Thank y'all. Listen, thank y'all for waiting so long to get up here, too.
So I've got a street acceptance, um, portion of Ripple Ridge located in Section Three Chair, uh, Creek Rise.
Motion approved from Counselor Tucker, second from the Mayor Pro Tim. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, please cue it. Counselors, you can get your votes.
Move approval of three through nine.
Say it, counsel.
All right, we've got a motion from, uh, Counselor House to approve items three through nine. It was seconded by Counselor Tucker. Any discussion or any item anybody wants pulled? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Hughley, if you would, walk through those items, please.
Uh, number three, uh, was another street acceptance recommended by Engineering Department. Number four was a purchase of fifty-two twelve Ray Street for a hundred and forty thousand dollars. We've got a drainage pipe going underneath the house, and we didn't have any other option. Um, number five, uh, risk management donation for workers' compensation seminars for public entities. Uh, number six, uh, is a, um, acquisition of, these are nineteen very small tiny parcels of property directly across in front of the Liberty Theater. You know, you got the big trees over there, it's a vacant lot, you know, Snyder Lance is no longer gonna be here, and it's just vacant property, and we're, and it's seventy-one thousand dollars. Um, we just don't want, we, we want to basically control the property, but it'll be, I don't want to say flip, but go for economic development opportunities that we can control. For example, we might not want a gas station to set up across the street from the Liberty, in front of the Liberty. So we just want the right business to come and want to do something with it, and we've got property all around that property that we're purchasing, that we've assembled, that it could really be an economic development opportunity. That's what that is. Uh, we've got Georgia Traffic Incident Management Enhancement Task Force Grant, it's twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars. We've got a porch providing overdose reversal to give Columbus hope. Uh, it's a, um, grant two million, up to two million dollars, uh, or as otherwise awarded. There is no match for that required by us. We've got Mots Green, um, it's, uh, uh, additional funds, and it's, uh, twenty percent match, uh, estimated at a hundred and three thousand, four hundred dollars to complete the Mots Green project.
We want to, we probably ought to thank Dana while she's here for her work on that porch project. That's been a significant, uh, tool for our officers and first responders to use to try to keep people from overdosing when they come into contact with fentanyl. Thank you.
Thank you.
State.
And so, Mayor, I've got some purchases.
Motion to approve A through E.
Motion to approve the purchases, uh, item A through E, uh, second from, uh, Counselor Tucker. Anybody want one, uh, pulled, discussed? All right, all those in favor of the purchases, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, they're approved.
So I've got traffic safety equipment, it's, uh, eighty-six thousand, forty-four dollars. We've got fiber contractor services, um, it's a, a rebid. Uh, we've got adoption of Ju- Georgia DOT procurement policy for, uh, the procurement, management, and administration of, of engineering and design related to consultant services. Uh, we've got payment for dialysis treatment for the jail, uh, for jail inmates, uh, and I've got, uh, Ivana Avanon Harmony email and core, um, collaboration advancement software for our information technology department is seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. And so those are the purchases, and Mayor and Counsel, I've got two, um, updates, a monthly finance update, and then Deputy City Manager Hodge will do a T-SLOSS update. Our Finance Director, Angelica Alexander.
Yes, sir, I'll be quick. It's been a long night. So you should have the, um, monthly financial snapshot before you, um, it's as of February twenty twenty-two. Um, just starting to the right side of the snapshot, uh, the general fund is, um, down, uh, when you compare, uh, February twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-one, um, and that's just because we still haven't fully recovered in some of our revenue sources, particularly, uh, the court fines and forfeitures, um, also in our, um, occupation tax, um, revenue, uh, we're, um, not where we, not quite where we were last year in that, so, um, the other local option sales tax fund, um, is down about four and a half percent, um, and, um, excluding the one-time revenue from the Department of, of, of Revenue, the one-time audit funds, um, that fund would actually be up about nine percent. So it, it's down right now, that is comparison to, um, last year, which included about three point, uh, three million in additional, uh, monies that we didn't receive this year. Um, the stormwater fund is up, uh, three and a half percent, the paving fund up three point three nine percent, uh, medical center fund up, uh, four point two three percent. Um, all of these funds are tax-supported, and, uh, general property taxes are up about four percent across the board. Uh, the integrated waste fund is down, um, twenty point four five percent, and a large part of that decrease is attributable to, uh, the capital investment, uh, that was made from the general fund to the integrated waste fund last year of about two point seven million. Um, the E nine one one fund is up, uh, fourteen point six one percent, um, that's due to an increase in revenue for the wireless surcharges. Um, Economic Development Fund up eight point five eight percent. It is also tax-supported. Um, the debt service fund down one point five five percent, and that's just due to the, uh, retirement of some of our existing, um, debt. The, uh, Transit, Metro Transportation Fund is up fifty-one point four five percent, and you know, a lot of, uh, Metro's revenue is, uh, grant-related as well, and so that's just really due to the timing of the, uh, reimbursements that we received on some of those grants. Uh, the Trade Center Fund is up forty-six point, um, zero seven percent. Uh, Bull Creek Golf Course Fund is down sixteen point nine two percent, um, but that is largely due to the, uh, general fund investment, I'm sorry, the CARES Act, uh, investment into the golf courses last fiscal year, there was about two hundred and twenty-two thousand that was invested in the golf, uh, courses for those golf carts. Um, excluding that sort of one-time influx of, um, funding, uh, it would actually be up about two and a half percent. Um, Oxbo Creek is up eight point six one percent, and the Civic Center is up, uh, five hundred and twenty-four percent. Yeah, obviously, uh, some great, uh, great things going on at Civic Center. Um, there is an increase in ticket sales this year, more events, more, uh, shows are happening at the Civic Center this year now that they've opened up, um, but also there was, uh, significant, uh, grant revenues that they received, about one point three million dollars in, um, grant revenue in FY twenty-two. Uh, moving down the snapshot to the other local option, um, sales tax fund, uh, public safety summary, uh, we've recorded to date about eighteen, eighteen point one million in revenue. Uh, we have about twenty-seven, uh, point six nine million in expenditures. Uh, for the other local option, sales tax fund, uh, infrastructure, uh, we've recorded about seven point seven, uh, just over seven point seven million in, uh, revenue, and, um, have obligations of about nine point two million. Uh, moving to the left side of the snapshot in terms of the general fund expenditures, you'll see here that the goal for February is to be at about, uh, thirty-three percent. So it's, uh, at or above thirty-three percent. Uh, the ones that are not, uh, quite at that percentage are highlighted here in yellow, um, starting with the city attorney's litigation, um, obviously, um, defending, um, millions in claims, um, for the, uh, employee benefits, um, well, in human, well, yeah, employee benefits, um, that is due to the annual death benefit and major disability payment that we have. Uh, we also have some unemployment benefits that, um, are paid out of that fund, and I hope that that does not go over this particular fis- fiscal year. Uh, we have seen a significant reduction in the unemployment claims that we, uh, pay out, because we are self-funded with our unemployment claims, um, so we reimburse the state for what they pay out on our behalf, but, um, so hopefully that doesn't exceed, um, the budget in that particular call center. Um, also, um, listed here is the Fire Department, um, that's largely due to the, um, pay enhancements that we've paid out, um, the Personnel Services, uh, those, um, um, fifteen hundred dollar bonuses that we've paid out, uh, for the, uh, Fire Department. So they're just on the watch list, and we knew that, you know, they didn't really have as much salary savings as some of the other, um, public safety departments, so, um, the jury manager here, that's, um, due to the petty jury fees, and the, uh, public defender, uh, is due to the monthly contract payment that we make, and we pay that in advance, so it'll always, uh, show as being over budget when technically it is not. That in itself is, uh, the finance update, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Doesn't appear to be any. Good job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And so the final, uh, Mayor and Counsel, uh, is a T-SLOSS update, uh, Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge.
So, good evening, Mayor and Counsel, Mr. City Manager. Um, I'll try to make this brief, but I did, um, want to go through, um, the T-SLOSS with you this evening. Um, again, we're part of the River Valley region, there were, uh, four original, uh, regions that adopted the T-SLOSS. Um, we had twenty-three projects for our region, um, eight of them are under construction, twelve have been completed, um, in the River Valley region. Um, those projects specifically in Muskogee County included, uh, the River Walk for ten million, which has been completed. which has been completed. The Follow Me Trail, three and a half million, has been completed. The US twenty-seven Custer Interchange at twenty million, that has been completed. The Metro was twenty-two point four million, and that one is in progress. The Spider Web Project is under construction. That's a forty-million-dollar project, plus some additional funds that have been allocated to this project as well. I-185 in Buena Vista, the diverging diamond, that one is under construction as well. The Conceitor Road Interchange, which was talked about earlier this evening, that one is under design, and the Right-Away Acquisition is underway by GDOT as we speak, that project at fifty-eight million. And then there are a couple of projects that, that really include Muskogee and Harris County on State Road two-nineteen, as well as US twenty-seven. So those two projects cross county lines, and those are both under design and in process. For T-SLOSS discretionary funds, from FY fourteen, when it originally started, through FY twenty-one, we had collected twenty-two point four-seven-five million. This is the list of projects that's been approved by Council and allocated out of T-SLOSS discretionary, resurfacing approximately twenty-seven miles at six point seven million, several bridge replacements, Boxwood Boulevard, Benning Drive, Claridon, Morris Road, the Warm Springs Road, Culver, Victory Drive improvements, traffic calming, the Double Churches Park parking, Salmon Road. And these are all things that have been done with T-SLOSS discretionary funds. The River Road JR Allen Signal, which has been allocated for a hundred and ten, that will be coming. The Victory Drive, Tenth Avenue Signal as well. A portion of the Reese Road Bridge was funded through T-SLOSS discretionary, matching funds for the Dragonfly Trail Project, sidewalks, the Infantry Road and Trail, the match for the Z-two-thirty funds came from T-SLOSS discretionary, the match for Mott's Green at two hundred thousand, and then guardrails. So a total of nineteen million out of the twenty-two has been allocated to a specific project. Now, that T-SLOSS does end this December, and so there is a, on the ballot, May twenty-fourth will be the continuation of the T-SLOSS for the citizens to consider. The final investment list, that forecast for ten years, these forecasts are done by GDOT, not locally, because we are part of a sixteen-county region, was six hundred and sixty-four million. Seventy-five percent of that is allocated to projects, and twenty-five percent is allocated to discretionary funds. And so out of the total present value of that investment list is just under four hundred million. GDOT is contributing a hundred and fifty-nine million to the projects within our region for a total project investment of five hundred and fifty-nine million that the voters will get to decide on May twenty-fourth. So that proposed list, and I'll walk through these quickly, this is all of the-
Well, I do want you to slow down. I know it's late on these.
Yes, sir.
Because these projects, people, there, there's an election on May twenty-fourth. This is on the ballot on May twenty-fourth. And, and I want people to be clear, this is an educational process of what is on the ballot, and they get to decide whether they want to support it or not. She wants you to go back one slide, but they need to be, they need to hear what streets, what's on this, so that they can decide, do you want this or not? And so that's, so I want you to slow down a little bit. She wanted you to go back.
I went through this here. Can I ask a question?
Yes. You may.
Okay, can you go through this again? Because I'm seeing GDOT contributions to projects, a hundred and fifty-nine million.
Sure.
And then the total project, and there's a big gap between those two numbers.
Okay, so the original forecast that GDOT did for this ten years would be six hundred and sixty-four million. Seventy-five percent is projects at five hundred and ninety-eight million, and twenty-five percent is what's considered local discretionary. So there's a formula where each county in the sixteen-county region receives a monthly discretionary funds, which I went through those projects that we've done with the twenty-two point four-seven-five million that we've received in discretionary funds from the T-SLOSS that we're in right now. There's also administration of the program at nineteen point seven, and then they've put an inflation factor in there. One of the problems that they had with the original T-SLOSS is that wasn't considered in the calculation, and so there's been some issues with the collection, which GDOT's had to make up the difference on a lot of the T-SLOSS projects since they did the original calculation. So they built that in. So the present value of that investment list, so the present value of the four hundred and ninety-eight million allocated is the seventy-five percent. Less administration and that inflation factor brings you to the present value of that investment list of three hundred and ninety-nine million. They're also going to contribute an additional hundred and fifty-nine million to the projects within our region that will make the total project investment at five hundred and fifty-nine million, which is the three hundred and ninety-nine million plus the one fifty-nine. So the total projects in the sixteen-county will be five hundred and fifty-nine million.
Okay.
Okay?
So that's not just Muskogee County, that's all the counties?
That's all the counties.
Okay.
And I'm going to go through all the projects that are in Muskogee County that are on the list that the voters will consider on May twenty-fourth.
Okay, thank you.
Are you able to give a kind of a brief description?
Yep, how about that? So these are all band one, so they take the T-SLOSS list and they make band one, band two, and band three. Band one is the first three years, band two is like year four through six, and then band three will be year seven through ten. So these are all the projects that would be allocated in the first three years that the T-SLOSS, if adopted by the region. So the first one, the River Rock repaving at twelve point five million, and that is to resurface parts of the River Walk. It would go from the Trade Center all the way down to Oxbo, and then from City Mills to the North Highland Dam. So really not resurfacing that portion that's in Uptown, which is not in need of resurfacing. The Steam Mill Road Improvement, you know, we've talked a lot about Steam Mill Road. We've had a consultant that's really evaluated that corridor. So this would include from Buena Vista Road all the way to the end, widening from two to three lanes with sidewalks, multi-use trails, streetscapes, and there would be a pedestrian bridge across I-85. So that's the Steam Mill Road projects. There's some roundabouts in there, and there'll be a public meeting about the Steam Mill Road project in the next couple of months. Whitesville Road Widening at twelve point eight million. This again is from two lanes to three lanes that will go from Whittlesey to Williams Road with intersection improvements and or roundabouts with sidewalks and a multi-use trail. That's on Whitesville Road. Buena Vista Road Corridor Improvements, and this is widening from two and four lanes to three, three lanes from Wenton Road to Ilges Road with sidewalks and a multi-use trail. South Lumpkin Road Streetscapes, ten point one million, and this would be from Victory Drive south to the roundabout, including sidewalks and multi-use trail for the South Lumpkin Road project. University Avenue Road Diet and Streetscapes, this will be from Manchester Expressway to Macon Road on University Avenue, and this is a road diet. We would reduce from four lanes to two lanes with more pedestrian and bicycle facilities along University Avenue. Thirteenth Avenue, Seventeenth Street, and Linwood, this would be either a roundabout or intersection improvements at that intersection. Liberty Theater Block Enhancements, this is along Eighth Avenue, four million dollars, and that would be from Eighth Street to Ninth Street, right in front of the Liberty Theater, and that would include things that you see on Broadway, streetscapes, sidewalks, pedestrian facilities, street lighting in front of the Liberty Theater. The Fifth Avenue Connector is about a half a mile, multi-use trail from Fourteenth Street to Tenth Street. Andrews Road Improvements is from Buena Vista Road to Conceitor Road, and that would be a widening from two to three lanes with sidewalks, multi-use trail, and landscaping. Brennan Road Improvements is from, at nine point two million, from Buena Vista Road to Conceitor Road, and that's widening from two to three lanes, again, with sidewalks, multi-use trail, and streetscapes. The Second Avenue Streetscapes at eighteen point two million. And now we're starting into the band-two projects. This would be from Manchester Expressway south to Nineteenth Street, include trails, sidewalks, and landscaping along the Second Avenue Corridor, which is a project that we get a lot of requests for. JR Allen at Schaumburg and Blackman, this is eleven point three. This is one of the projects in Muskogee County that GDOT would also contribute to this project for a total of eleven point three. And this would be looking at eastbound and westbound ramps, intersection improvements at those two intersections for JR Allen at Schaumburg and Blackman. Forest Road Widening, this would be from Macon Road to Woodruff Farm Road, from two to three lanes with a roundabout at Trinity and Forest, also includes sidewalks and a multi-use trail. Morris Road Improvements at twelve million, this would be from Buena Vista Road to Forest Road, widening from two to three lanes, again, with sidewalks, multi-use trail, and landscaping. Conceitor Road, excuse me, Conceitor Road Widening, this would be from two to three lanes with roundabouts from Tenth Avenue to North Lumpkin Road, with roundabouts at North Lumpkin at twenty-third, Anne Brown at Andrews Road, also, again, the sidewalks and multi-use trail at this project. Williams Road Widening at eighteen point seven, this would be from Veterans Parkway to I-85, widening from two to three lanes with pedestrian and bicycle amenities, a roundabout at Williams and I-85, and at Fortson Road with pedestrian and bicycle amenities. Double Churches Road Improvements, and we're into band-three at this point, this would be from Veterans Parkway to River Road, again, with multi-use trails, sidewalks, intersection improvements, or a roundabout at Double Churches and Whitesville Road. County Line at Mahaffey, this is a thirty-seven point four-five million-dollar project. Again, this is another one that GDOT would make a contribution towards a project in Muskogee County. This one also crosses into Harris County, and that is the Intersection Interchange to widen that bridge at Mahaffey and County Line Road. And then also on Mahaffey, two lanes to three lanes. And then the last one for the road projects or transportation is the Bull Creek Dragonfly Trail Connector, and this would be Rigdon Park, Woodruff Farm Road connection, and this is about nine point five miles of connection. And then there's also funding for Metro for twenty-five million, and also funding for the Columbus Airport at twenty-five million. So a total of Muskogee County projects at three hundred and three million. From the discretion, or from the list of three hundred and three million, they're estimating that our discretionary funds would be approximately thirty-two point five million for a total projects in Muskogee County of three hundred and thirty-nine million. Again, GDOT would make a contribution of just over thirty-eight million towards that project list. And also, when the T-SLOSS, which we don't really talk about, but our contribution to our L-MIG grants is reduced when there's a T-SLOSS in place. So there is some additional savings from that as well. On our L-MIG, our contribution is reduced for the match for L-MIG when there's a T-SLOSS in place. And it's about a, they're estimating it would be about a nine-million-dollar savings to Muskogee County alone if the T-SLOSS is in place. So just to kind of summarize, our project list was two hundred and one million on the T-SLOSS that's in place today. With those projects that have a multi-county project, which includes Harris County, is fifty-seven million. Our discretionary, we're estimating our total will be around twenty-seven point four million. We've received twenty-four point six to date. The 2022 proposed list is three hundred and three million, with GDOT contributing about thirty-eight million to that project list, and our proposed discretionary of thirty-six point five million would equate to a total investment in Muskogee County if both T-SLOSS, if the second T-SLOSS is approved, at six hundred and twenty-six million in transportation Which leads me to the update of the public meetings. So we're scheduled three public meetings to be from 5:30 to 6:30. We'll go through the project list, we'll answer any questions that any of the citizens have. The first one is Thursday, the April fourteenth. It will be here in this location. It will be televised on CCG TV, so for those who aren't able to be here, they'll be able to watch. And then we have two additional meetings, April twenty-fifth and April twenty-eighth, at Shirley Winston and Salmon Road.
An observation and a recommendation. The City Manager, you, you got some pretty significant road projects, and the second go around the north side is knows for fact that a lot of these projects that are on this list are key and important in a district that's growing day by day. I think we had a long conversation on that earlier, but I, I see the meeting list, and I see Midland, I see South Columbus, I see the heart of Columbus, but I don't see anything on the north end of town, and you've got some key projects on there. I would hope that the people in the district I represent would want to see that. I plan to get that information out, but I think that they want to know that. I think it would be key if you want to gain some vital support in seeing this initiative passed, because they need to know about some of these road projects that are on here.
Yeah, well, we can add another meeting. That's not a problem. We just-
Just an observation. Counselor Thomas, you think I'm right on that?
Yeah, we can certainly add another session, so-
Absolutely.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Counselor Thomas.
Mr. City Manager, I just want to make sure that we say over and over and over again that when this is on the ballot, the question will be yes or no. It will not be, I like this one, I don't like this one. And the sixteen-county region, in order for the T-SLOSS to pass, now Pam, make sure I'm saying this right, in order for the T-SLOSS to pass, the majority of the voters in all sixteen counties, fifty percent plus one, have to vote in yes. And like the last election, Harris County voted no. The majority of the people in Harris County voted no, but the majority of the people in the sixteen-county area voted yes. So Harris County got what they was, was on their list, okay? But the thing is, it's not a, I like this one, I don't like this one. It's a, the entire group is voted up or down.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
I just think we need to remind folks, because I have had folks say, well, you know, I sort of, but I don't think we, you know. Thank you for sharing. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
All right. Move on to the Clerk's agenda. Madam Clerk.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. For the Clerk's agenda, the first item, our minutes of various boards to be received.
Motion to minutes received. Mayor Pro Tem, Secretary Counselor House. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They're approved.
Next, we have board appointments. We have the mayor's appointments. Any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting.
I do have, I do have a gentleman that I'll get you his bio later, but it's Armando Fernandez for the Community Development Advisory Council.
Motion to confirm from Mayor Pro Tem, second from, who's that, Counselor Huff? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? He is confirmed.
Next, we have the Convention and Visitors Board of Commissioners. Next, we have the Convention and Visitors Board of Commissioners. Uh, Mayor Henderson is nominating Pace Halter for this seat and he may be confirmed.
Motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor Huff again. Counselor Gary Yost, switching off. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to have to get rid of these things because I can't hear who's doing what.
Okay. And next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation. For the Animal Control Advisory Board, Mr. Raymond Colpepper was nominated to serve another term. He may be confirmed.
Motion to confirm, Mayor Pro Tem, second Counselor House. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? He's confirmed. All right, just, uh, motion and a second to confirm, uh, Ms. Stull and Ms. Pierce. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are confirmed.
Next, we have the Development Authority. Mr. Dallas Copeland was nominated to serve another term.
There's confirmation from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor Garrett. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Also for the Development Authority, Mr. Tyson Begley. He was nominated to succeed Mr. Alfred Blackmar.
Motion and second to confirm. I have no idea who to call that one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Confirmed. All right, there's a motion to approve, uh, confirm Ms. Browder, uh, and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? She's confirmed. Motion, second to confirm Ms. Boren. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? She's confirmed.
Next, we have council district seat appointments. Any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting for the Civic Center Advisory Board. Counselor Huff is nominating Reverend Gregory Blue for the seat of Row Easter Coles. And he may be confirmed.
Motion, second to confirm. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? He's confirmed.
We also have the Community Development Advisory Council. Uh, Counselor Crabbe is nominating Michael Ernest to succeed Tamika McKenzie.
Motion, second to approve. Uh, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations would be listed for the next meeting for the Animal Control Advisory Board. The seat of Lindsay Ellis. Uh, Counselor Garrett is nominating Patricia Montgomery for this seat. And we will bring this back for confirmation for the next meeting. For the Historic and Architectural Review Board, the seat of Kathy Williams is open for nominations. This is the Historic Columbus Foundation seat. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Counselor Thomas.
For the City Manager, our Deputy City Manager, Goodman. Um, I have been asked by several different people if the typical political yard sign is recyclable. Do you know the answer to that? The ones that are, that are, you know, out in the yard?
They're great fire starters.
If they're cardboard, they are, but some of them are laminated, sort of.
Yeah, but they are, as far as I know, they're recyclable. Yes, unless they're that, you know, some are plastic that you put-
Right.
But the, the paper, cardboard ones, though they're laminated, would be recyclable.
Okay. And what about the, um, metal, uh-
I don't normally put those metal stands in the, I don't put that-
Put those in the waste, in the-
No.
Household waste?
Yes, those will go in household waste.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, we needed to go into executive session, uh, on, um- Litigation and Personnel. Uh, all in favor, there's a motion, second to go in. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're in executive session. All right, we are, uh, back in regular session. We were in executive session discussing personnel and litigation. No votes were taken. Have a motion to adjourn?
I'm not moving.
Motion and a second to adjourn. Before we go, happy birthday to Counselor Crabbe tomorrow and, uh, happy birthday to Counselor Davis next week on the twenty-eighth. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.